About two more minutes, uh, we don't do the call for a work session, but I think also what we have online is myself, Councilman Short, Councilwoman Thomas. Councilwoman Jackson, how you doing? Councilwoman Benjamin, how you doing?
Thank you, Ohio, it's a second.
One five. Okay, it's five o'clock, let's go ahead on, uh, call this work session to order. Uh, we have two additional items that we will be discussing tonight on the consent agenda. Uh, no, consent, well, uh, council work session agenda, uh, Councilman Johnson, uh, we talked about it, but did you just put it on, that supplementary pay for Rick at public works? Uh, that would be item number nine, and item number ten would be cemetery, Councilman Jonathan Stewart. Uh, so we have a total of ten items for the work session agenda tonight. At this time, I'm gonna ask Councilman Short, I'm gonna call in for a session to meet the order. Councilman Short, would you be so kind to give us the invitation, sir?
Uh, yes, sir, I want to draw your attention to, uh, Psalm twenty seven. The Lord is my light and my salvation. Whom shall I fear? The Lord is the strength of my life, whom should I be afraid? When the wicked, even my enemies and my foes, came upon me to eat my flesh, they stumbled and sailed. Though in holes she was and kept against me, my heart should not fear. So, where she lies against me, in which will I be comforted, earth pray? To heaven and father, God, again, we, the men and women of the Selma City Council Congress, we with our benevolence and our hearts, asking you to give the midst of our deliberation, help us build the business of the people. Because after all, this council was elected to serve the people. And as long as we continue to keep the people in the midst of our deliberation, we will truly do what is best for thee. We actually hope the Father to always allow Selma to be in your loving, brilliant arms. Allow us to forever be grateful for your humble mercy. Well, thank you to heaven and Father for allowing the organizers and the coordinators of our deceased brothers, John Lewis, that allowed them to bring our brother home. Yes, this is his home, because he shed blood here on the infamous Bloody Sunday Day, March 7th, 1955. We want to thank you, heaven and Father, for men like him. And we hope and pray that you will always introduce it to the world, men like him. Because we know we're gonna continue to need, to need men of his stature, ones of his courage. And we will always acknowledge whether people stand up for what is right. We're gonna always, we want to give you the praise and the honor and the honor in the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. Councilman Short, uh, to the citizens' request, we do not have any citizens on the agenda tonight, but I re- I recall at the last work session that we asked the representative from, uh, Avenue slash RDS to be present. And tonight, uh, I got a contact with Mr. Terry Bradsteal from, uh, Avenue slash RDS. Mr. Bradsteal, how you doing tonight?
Can y'all hear me? Yes, sir, I'm here, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, fantastic, um, thank y'all very much for allowing me to speak to y'all this evening. Um, I know, um, y'all are probably used to talking to Yolanda Washington more, uh, but she had some personal time off, she was taking, uh, this Monday to do some traveling. And so I'm here, um, uh, in her behalf, uh. She wanted me to just be here to answer questions for anybody. Uh, I think the majority of what Yolanda was telling me about were, uh, a pretty sizable amount of money from delinquent taxpayers in the city of Selma. Uh, I have some notes, I'm not aggressive all of it. But, um, I believe, uh, originally, Selma had reached out to us about a year ago in October to ask us about some, um, I, I believe it's business license discovery money. Uh, at that point, there were about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars that had been discovered, uh, as being owed to, um, the city of Selma. Or no, the amount, uh, the amount owed was about six hundred and sixty thousand. Um, over the, over the last year or so, that amount has gone down to about five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, uh, Yolanda sent me some numbers, there are sixty-five businesses, uh, that are responsible for that. Only five of those are making monthly payments right now. Eight have liens in place, and four have filed bankruptcy. So although they, they have filed bankruptcy, they are not exempt from those taxes. Um, as well in that, in that list, there are fifteen of those businesses that are being, uh, subject to third-party collections that we're working on. Uh, I believe Yolanda has sent the majority of this information to, uh, Cory, so he has it as well. I just wasn't sure what, um, the majority of the questions would be, and I just wanted to kinda get a little base out there so everybody knew where we were coming from.
Okay, Councilman Short, how forward is that on this? Did you all receive the information, how forward did you?
Uh, is it Yolanda?
Yeah, Yolanda, yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you, yeah, I believe whatever you said to her, she's hoping that you ever-
No, 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 I forwarded to the council members. Did you all receive the information, I forwarded to you from Yolanda?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, uh, I received a copy of all of the Joseph, uh, people that own the city of Malibu. But my question is, uh, for those that are not paying, can we get a list that is separate from those that are paying?
Uh, yes, sir, I, I think that would not be a problem because you have this. Uh, Yolanda, is that for you? I have a, a fairly large list here in Birmingham, uh, that has business names on it. I'm not sure, um, Yolanda had sent me a list of businesses that she said she wasn't sure if we could send you or not. I think if you had to get a list of businesses that are paying and are not paying, you'd probably have to go through our Birmingham office to get that information.
Okay, and, and once we get that list, what option do we have to sue the air?
Well, and then, as the city, although, you know, although we are your third-party tax collector, one thing that we pride ourselves on is making sure that we never take the ability to, to close a business away from the city that we serve. I don't even think legally we're allowed to do that. Um, there are plenty of avenues that you can take, like I said. There are liens currently in place on some tax holders, that's always, uh, an option, to put liens on people's property. Uh, another option would be to bring those business owners before the council and, uh, try to get, you know, either a reasoning as to why they're so behind on their payments, or you can close the business down yourself. Um, that's another option, it just depends on how you wanna go about doing it.
I actually have a little business that, uh, my landlord's business, but they owe the city taxes. They're no longer ahead, but they're no longer any David business of doing business in the city of Selma, but yet they owe the city, uh, taxes. What option do we have, uh, for after them, can we put liens on their property?
Absolutely, absolutely. I also have, I don't know, uh, Cory, did you get, uh, a petition for, uh, injunctions against the taxpayer for delinquent payment of license or exercise tax? I think Yolanda had-
Yes, I did. Yes, I forwarded to, uh, a turnabout, uh, to the-
Okay, yeah, great, there's, that, that petition as well is a great way to start.
All right, I appreciate you.
Yeah, um, just, just to recap, you know, you can, uh, place liens on taxpayer property. Um, you can do, uh, the petition for the injunctions against the taxpayer. And then if there are businesses that are still operating and not remitting taxes, you can bring them before the council and choose to close the business down.
Okay, are you any other question from Mr. Bradsteal? You got a little down low?
Uh, let me see here, um, so in October two thousand and nineteen, the total amount owed was six hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, in the month of June twenty twenty, um, the, the amount owed in the city of Selma is five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five, or twenty-four, so it's gone down about a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Mr. President, I would, I would recommend a financial committee, a several quick sounds in a hurry, and let's go on going after these today with taxpayers. These take all the city money, and they, and they should, uh, be accountable to them, for not remitting taxes to this city. I think it's now time for us to move in on, and do what we need to do. Definitely. Uh, I, I begin with, I'll try to mention, uh, cause I know we did talk about the various options, uh, possibly the Johnsons and everything, and I know, I'm trying to mention, you knew to this, but I do concur with you, we can move forward, uh, through the financial committee so we can, uh, recoup some of the funding that we lost. Councilwoman, uh, Youngblood.
Oh, I'm, just, I agree, uh, Mr. President, there, there are just far cities, delinquencies, that have gone pretty long, and, like, you know, we've all said it, this was not their money to choose whether they were gonna pay or not. They were just blessed on, on behalf of us, the county, the state, but they just built the tax around. It is fair, it is no less than fair.
Any other?
He's talking about it.
You know, you have a good question. Okay, thank you, Mr., uh, Bradsteal. All right.
Thank you, sir. And if y'all, uh, need any questions with anything else, or help finding out, um, where to get the, uh, taxpayer information, I know, um, Mr. President's got my contact information as well as Yolanda's, so if you need anything, feel free to pass it on to anyone, and we're here to help.
All right, thank you so much, have a good day.
Sure, have a good evening.
All right. Um, now to, uh, the mayor's report, uh, Mayor, Mayor, are you on the line? Mayor, are you on the line? Okay, uh, I think we have, uh, Chief Graham, are you on the line, Chief, by Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, ladies and gentlemen of council, and Mr. President Bowie, I, I've looked over my budget that was approved for the fiscal twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget year. I'd like to, uh, make a request for a budget change, a few of the line items that fired upon our budget, um, following what outline was requested. Um, I need to purchase a, uh, four-wheel drive crew cab truck, uh, it's got the decal, the lights, radio, and a rear cover to protect the equipment being housed in the rear of the vehicle. The approximate total cost will be, uh, forty-two thousand, just for the purchase of a new staff vehicle for the battalion chief, shift commander that's on duty. My current vehicle is given every day, twenty-four-seven vehicle, it's become an issue with costing maintenance repairs, and needs to be removed from emergency response. I'd like to request this purchase from this year's fiscal budget, and then ask in the new budget, in the new budget for next year, to get approval to purchase a training staff vehicle, training division. Um, I sent an email out to President Bowie, uh, did you get that email?
Yes, sir, and I forwarded to the council members.
Okay. Uh, in that email, I also included, uh, the quotes for the purchase of, uh, of that vehicle. One was from Turner Chevrolet, and one was from Condo. Um, and also the quotes for the light, the radio equipment, decal. Uh, need to take forty-two thousand from my clothing and, uh, uniform line item, and move it to the equipment fixed asset for the purchase of that vehicle. Uh, the twenty nineteen budget was approved for the clothing uniform at thirty-one thousand, and as just as of July first, the line item is turned up balanced at fifty-eight thousand. This will leave the clothing and uniform line item budget with a balance of sixteen thousand after the transfer of those funds to that account. And the second thing I've got is, I need to purchase, uh, seven new air packs and thirty-five new face masks due to many air packs that I've got are now obsolete, and they cannot be repaired, uh, they're in the current use and also out of service. The air packs have a lifespan of about ten years, and the air packs that we have are well over fifteen years. We have a total of twenty-eight air packs, and the department out of those twenty-eight only ten are meeting the current NFT standard. I'd like to request, uh, the purchase of seven new air packs from this year's fiscal budget, and then ask in the new fiscal budget for next year, to get approval for the purchase of nine more air packs in October's new fiscal budget. Uh, and I've also included two quotes for that type of equipment, and those are specialized equipment as well. Uh, the cost to purchase those seven new air packs and thirty-five face masks, uh, I put thirty-five face masks on that because the new air packs have to have, uh, those new face masks in order for those to operate correctly. Uh, the approximate cost for those are about forty, forty-eight thousand. I need to take about eight thousand from my, from my line item, uh, equipment non-fixed asset, and move it to the line item for hoses and nozzle, et cetera, uh, for the purchase of those new air packs. Uh, the twenty nineteen budget was approved for equipment non-fixed asset at twenty-one thousand, and as of July first of twenty twenty, uh, the line item is currently balanced at seventeen thousand, four seventy-four, and twenty-five cents. This will leave the equipment non-fixed asset line item budget with a balance of about nine thousand after the transfer of those funds to that account. Um, the purchase of these items will not affect the current budget and adding any of the cost to obtain this equipment. It's a vehicle, and if our equipment's not acquired within this budget cycle before September thirtieth, I would humbly request that the funds, uh, by now requesting from this fiscal year budget be rolled over into the next year's fiscal budget as an add-on. Um, I thank y'all in advance for review, review and that request, and hope that we can get these items approved for the purchase so that the fire department can operate at emergency times without any issues.
All right, I have a question for-
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Jackson, go ahead. Go ahead. Councilwoman Jackson? Oh, Council, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, um, uh, Mr. Chief Graham, uh, requires all of these, uh, items that he needs, and he wants to, uh, uh, use the fiscal year budget of twenty nineteen, where he has the funds already in there. I have one question to ask the Chief. Chief Graham, uh, have you, uh, met with Miss Wade and, uh, looked at, uh, with all these items that the money is there for you to, to request to, to have all of these that you need for the fire department?
Yes, ma'am, I sat down with Wade last week and spoke to her about this.
Okay, well, I, I, uh, I would want you to have the equipment that's been requested, uh, also you were talking about. Is this the same, uh, vehicle that you were talking about prior to, uh, this before, that you came before the council?
Yes, ma'am, this is the same vehicle I'm trying to get replaced, I'm trying to take it out of the, hey, this, this vehicle's like twenty-four-sevens every day, since twenty twelve vehicle was purchased. And, uh, I need to, uh, take that, that bad vehicle.
So everything that you requested, but you do have the funds there for you to, uh, the fiscal year of twenty nineteen budget for you to receive these days?
Yes, ma'am, I, I spoke to Miss Wade about it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? Chief, uh, with them, uh, these that you requested, do you, do you think I changed, they'll be ready for the year, by the year?
If I can go ahead and order it today, or to, I mean, not today, but, uh, if I can order it tomorrow, um, they're saying it's gonna be an eight to ten week process, it just depends on, um, their processing on that, and that's why I say, you know, if it's not finished by September thirtieth for us to receive it, uh, I'd like to have that money rolled over. As far as the air packs, uh, I believe I can get those in there in a week.
But, the air packs, what, what, what do they, uh, have a, a ten year, what about ten to twelve years?
Yes, sir, they got a ten-year lifespan on those air packs, and, uh, ours are well over that. Ours are, are about fifteen, they are fifteen years and older, and they need to be replaced. I can't, they're obsolete, I can't find any parts for the, uh, ones that are out of service right now. And I, I've gotta have those air packs, uh, in order to go into, uh, ideal heating environment, you know, house fire, so on and so forth.
All right. I want to turn around, I'm, I'm, you're asking for Chief.
The total amount?
Yes.
Uh, for the vehicle and the air packs, it's gonna be roughly about ninety thousand.
Okay, and, and you say you couldn't personally, Miss Wade, and she said the money's there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Miss Wade, are you on the line? Miss Wade? Miss Wade?
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Okay, yeah, so would it be a problem if you could email that to us in writing, uh, so we can learn, uh, move forward, put it on the discussion agenda?
Yes, uh, if he could just send me what he sent you, we did have a discussion about the thing. One thing that I did recognize in him, because he was, I ensured that their, uh, vehicles, yeah, by September thirtieth, is that, um, he gets a permission from you all to replace the oil, because you know, as you know, uh, public safety vehicles don't usually, it takes a while for them to come, so we can have it accounted for in the upcoming year, but, but in terms of the other items, if he was bored, and I could just reply back to all verified that those funds are available. But I, I really, um, think that, um, you know, he, I think what he needs at this point is this permission to move forward with the oil process, because, you know, when we talked, he said it's just September thirtieth when we pushed it, so we'll be in the new budget cycle by the time, um, it takes delivery. So we can figure that, that kind of stuff.
Thank you, Miss Wade. Uh, Chief, uh, we just want to put that request on the discussion agenda on tomorrow, uh, if you just permit to move forward, because I know you're bothering a lot for us, to allow you to move forward, uh, with, with the purchase of the equipment.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
All right, Mr. President, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Jackson, please.
I, I thought, we, we, you thought earlier this week about, uh, some money was tricked down, uh, I guess from the government for the COVID, uh, nineteen. Does the innocent person get your base, the, uh, the fire department, first of all, like from the thing, like their masks and things that they need to get, uh, can innocent persons go to war there, or, or?
I don't know, I asked the attorney manager about, uh, certain items, and then when he come up for his, uh, uh, attorney report, maybe he should, I think he can answer that.
Okay, awesome, well, if we can, if you do, we can use some of that, so they can take money. I mean, we could use that, because that is the money that was tricked down for us, so hopefully we could use it, uh, for the cost of a person, uh, which is be part of the fire department.
That would help, would help.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, any other question, Chief? If you have any other-
Just wanna, um, uh, address, uh, Councilman Johnson, uh, the, uh, the face mask that we're asking for, uh, actually goes with the air pack, so I don't, in my perspective of looking at it, don't think that it would fund that side of it. It might, but I don't think it will, because it's a specialized equipment that goes along with, with the air pack, so, uh, as far as face mask on COVID stuff, you know, I've got that, I ordered that through, you know, like the surgical mask, things like that, this is, this is a different type of specialized equipment.
Okay, we, we just want to be checking out to see if, but, uh, but, because anyway, any of the funding we can get to help, to help, uh, 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 we, we looking forward, uh, to getting-
All right.
But, because we don't wanna lose, because we gotta spend a little bit of time, we, we don't spend a real little bit. But anyway, uh, but still, let's just try and look into it, if we can, Wade, and anything else that on that list you, you need, uh, hopefully we can use it, uh, to, to, to move forward to, to, to reach, but if you can't do it, we understand, we'll leave one trial.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, it, it might, we might be able to put those air packs on there as well, that, if that takes, that'd be great.
Okay, absolutely. Also, we have- Also, we have Councilwoman Benjamin, that's gonna be part of her, uh, report, that's what I'm fishing on, maybe she can bring us up to speed with some of the questions also.
And, and President, Mr. President? Yeah, I was looking to get to this, uh, I should ask, I should go ahead and speak to that one before, before. Uh, Chief, I, I think I heard you say that you had, this is in a budget line item someplace?
Yes, ma'am.
That automatically puts you out, uh, with, uh, compensation for COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen funds are for those things that have not been budgeted and those things that are COVID nineteen related. It was not seen in the previous budget at all, in place anywhere.
Right, right, it's, uh, I'm, I'm basically asking for a budget adjustment to move some money in.
I understand, I understand. I got the fact you-
I understand where you come from too, if it, if it, if you have it in your, in your budget to fund, then your grant won't fund it.
Yeah, the, the COVID nineteen relief fund, uh, you are, they, uh, that's one of the strict rules is that if it's already budgeted, that means you are already needed before the pandemic.
And also too, Councilwoman Jackson, uh, if I'm, if I'm correct, if we do spend the money on that or not, if outside the scope of the drawdown, and we would not be reimbursed, correct?
No, no, sir, would not be reimbursed out, so, uh, we, we, on this one, since he said it's already budgeted, uh, we have to go with his budget amendment.
Yes, ma'am, that's what's up. All right, are you any other questions for the Chief? Chief Graham, any other questions? That's all I got, President. Uh, thank you, sir, thank you, Chief. Um, at this time, I'll turn it out. Goodness, thank you, Mr. President, good evening, uh, President Bowie, uh, ladies and gentlemen, city council, uh, councilmen and councilwomen, and, uh, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen and gentlemen, uh, I'm gonna first of all, chime in on the last part of the discussion between Chief Graham and the council. I wholeheartedly concur with what, uh, both Councilwoman Benjamin was saying, and you were saying, uh, okay, I'm President Bowie, that, uh, there's a timeline within which, outside of which funds cannot be, uh, used. COVID-related reimbursement will not occur, and, uh, and the fact that it's already been budgeted is a matter of an operational budget that COVID funds would not supply, when it cannot be used to supplement. So you're both right on, on that call. Uh, I wanna say too, going to the issue first of contracting, that I've got, uh, one, two-
Uh, I wanna say two, going to the issue first of contracting, that I've got, uh, one, two, three, four councilperson, two vast contracts. Uh, none of which I have ready tonight, but all of which will be ready for thing in the morning. And I've got the information from Councilwoman Jackson. Already I've got information from Councilwoman Thomas about one of the contracts that was set, and I believe she wants to, I should need some information for. And I've gotten requests from Councilwoman Benjamin and Councilman Randolph for contracts. I just got, uh, some of that information, uh, about an hour and a half ago. So, uh, those contracts, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, that's two contracts, uh, are scheduled to be with, uh, Snow's Cleaning Service, uh, scope of workers to do cleaning and trimming of whiteways and alleys, vacant lots, and cemeteries throughout. War three, uh, for a budgeted amount of five thousand dollars. Uh, the contract start date, this is, uh, the first twenty-twenty to run, prospectively through September the thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Uh, there was a, a failure to communicate that I think that I resolved, and was about, uh, the total amount being five thousand. And statement in the prospectus being twenty-five hundred dollars for two months. I think there was meant to be twenty-five hundred dollars per month for two months. That was one of the questions I had asked before, but I pretty much figured that out, uh, Councilwoman Jackson. Uh, and, uh, the second contract is be with Dymo Tree LLC for, four sixteen Church Street, eight twelve Young Street, and the corner of Saddle and River View. Those, the scope of work amounts are thirty-two hundred dollars, Church Street, thirty-nine hundred dollars, Young Street, twenty-five hundred dollars, corner of Saddle, and River View for a total of nine thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, there was one contract for Councilwoman Thomas, I believe, three thousand. One Kingly Drive, requested to have tree moved from property from, uh, which is on the right away path, um, according to, uh, the information I received. Uh, area is accessible, but, uh, both similar works, works, water sewer and city cell. Uh, that contract, uh, I did not see the amount for, but I can get that pretty easily.
It's a, it's, it's not a country, it's not a country.
Okay, well then that's another reason I didn't have.
No, it's not a country.
I thought you asked for that tree here, but would, would that still be a work order?
Yeah, that was a work order for, uh, public work to, uh, remove the limbs off of they, off of their, 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 the shitty right away limbs are going on to someone, uh, shed.
Okay, well then that's what that's going on. And no, no contract, by the way, has been drafted, is what I was about to say.
No, no.
Okay, but you, but that was information that you were gonna supply, that, that contract. Alright, and Councilwoman Benjamin just provided me with additional information, and Councilman Randolph had an email received in the office, and I did not get the entirety of the information. Here, here's, here's the bottom line with all the contracts. There are five things that are always needed, the parties, the scope of work, the funds to be obligated, the amount of the contract, the funding source, and the term of the contract. Without, without those things, uh, there's always gonna be something lacking, and, and not a complete set of information to, to draft the contract. Uh, I can re-send those highlights. I've, I've done this before. I gave, uh, a letter on contract, and had a copy of the council procedures, procedures that you, you opted. I think it was a year and a half ago or so. Uh, anytime those areas, five areas are included in a request, and the procedures of the council are being followed, and I have no, uh, alternative but to go ahead and draft the contract, I would be glad to do so. Uh, the, now, I'll come back to that as you have questions, if you have questions. The municipal election update concerns Resolution one thirty-six dash nineteen slash twenty. Uh, the election official resolution, Ms. Public Paris has sent out. The resolution has, she sent it out in the format that included information needing to be supplied and read. In other words, names of people to work, performing places, for either your wards and, and generally two precincts in your ward. The names and contact information are still needed from some of you. I think Councilman, uh, Boldine has resolved the issue. We had a communication, and I, uh, mistakenly told him I didn't think that he had to provide the information as he wasn't right. I was wrong. I have been suggested about that, and he's already, uh, uh, still case underway now, secured underway now with securing, uh, that information. Uh, but the bottom line is, all of the council persons are required to submit information for who were working, pulling places. Only council member can do that. And I understand with the pandemic, that some people, uh, want to come out and vote, especially if they're, uh, elderly or have, or health issues or not to mention, uh, fall into both of those categories. But we still have to get, uh, the information from you, and we have a tight timeline we're running up against. The reason we picked last week was so that we can have all the information to you, uh, tomorrow to have the river pass on. So if you still need to get any information, I would strongly encourage you to do it later, uh, than tomorrow, uh, tomorrow morning or, or by noon if possible. There's an executive session that's been requested for tomorrow night at four o'clock. Uh, there are at least three personnel has up there, at least three, because I got the information today about an hour and a half, maybe two hours ago. Uh, unless that, uh, puts something else on my radar, uh, for purposes of, uh, of, of legal matters evolving, and, and I can only go as far as I just went, uh, without being in an executive session concerning that. But it's very extreme, extremely important matter I've said in on a couple of, uh, personal action matters in the last, uh, week or so, last week, two weeks, and, and might be sitting out on another one soon. Uh, public care, the public care is set tomorrow night as well, on a, a parent's request, uh, by Harvard Spencer, uh, Mr. Spencer's property, uh, has a wall, uh, I believe on the north side of, uh, I think that's McLeod Street, that he's requesting, uh, uh, the city to vacate some property concern. But that's set for tomorrow, tomorrow night, and the hearing will take place, um, after council meets, a- after council meets. Uh, A.D.M. has been responded to twice now. Uh, A.D.M. sent a proposed, oh, well, may I add, conference first, few weeks ago, uh, in which Council President Bowie, Councilwoman Shaw, Councilwoman Johnson participated. Uh, they, as a result of that conference, uh, the, the mayor took it to our, there, and one or two of them is, uh, as a result of that conference, uh, we had to respond to a proposed order and reach a conclusion, which we did in meeting, uh, previously, concerning how to address or whether or not all of the violations that had been written up were addressed, as well as what corrective action we were planning, as well as whether or not we would agree to a consent order. We did in kind address each of those three issues. The violations, as the mayor did, uh, that pretty much, uh, went hell from his crew, uh, uh, that, uh, the issue of, equipment and personnel came up that you're reading, and that was addressed. And the issue of whether or not you would agree, the city would agree to consent order, was, was tackled, and, and the decision was yes. So we've done each of those in, in turn, in response to the original violations that were sent out to us in the proposed order. What's followed was a draft consent order that was sent to me by Attorney Todd Carter from A.D.M. I responded to that draft consent order by issuing, uh, including, from the city's perspective, the contentions that were set for, as far as the city is concerned, to deal with the areas that we'd already addressed, mostly what, me, what remediation had taken place, as well as, uh, provide as a prospective, uh, corrective action. And what will happen next is that A.D.M. will now send an order, an action order, once, since we've been given an opportunity to respond to not only the violation of a proposed consent order. What's unfolding is that it appears as though there's consideration being given to lower any fine from, uh, first twenty-four thousand, then eighteen thousand, now to somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Instead of the eighteen thousand we thought it could and likely would be. Uh, the other thing that's gonna happen is that once the consent order is sent back, it would figure a forty-five day period within which to send in, ask it for the second time, corrective action plan. Uh, in talking with you, and talking further with President Bowie, the corrective action plan was checked up into three periods to include personnel being, uh, acquired, additional personnel over, uh, I think it was about a sixty day period. Uh, it could have been purchased over about a hundred and twenty day period, uh, it could be one twenty or one hundred and eighty days. I have to go back to the doctor to be sure. And finally, uh, holding the citizenry of some Alabama county, where dumping garbage into the construction and demolition landfill is concerned, holding them accountable when they do that, but also, uh, making sure their whatever ordinances are already on, on the books, are enforced, are passed, and whatever additional orders, arduous, hard notices are needed to, to make that happen. Uh, the, the, the forty-five day period is triggered once we get the actual order in the mail. Uh, we'll have to tape the file, uh, within, uh, forty-five days, as well as get the corrective action in. And if we have, if we have some disagreement or objection to consent order after it's sent back, then we'll have thirty days to make that objection known. We shouldn't have any at this point, because we've been given ample opportunity to counter and to respond, uh, in both terms of correct, of, of remediation and, and proposing corrective action. Uh, the Attorney General's opinion that was requested by the council and the mayor was returned, uh, last Thursday, I believe. Uh, I read it late Thursday afternoon and, uh, talked with the mayor about it. I also got a call from Attorney Bob Seagull, asking me what my take was on the Attorney General's opinion. So he, I, I, oh, Attorney, that was late Friday afternoon, uh, if I just received it, I might have already typed it to the council mail. Okay, okay. Uh, but, but Attorney Seagull, I talked Saturday, uh, uh,
Okay.
I, I wasn't able to talk with him. Friday, we, we played phone tag a couple of times. I told him I sent him a text message Friday evening, saying I would, uh, reach out to him, Senator, and I did, and we talked. Uh, it boils down basically to, uh, what the Attorney General's opinion stated, that the mayor by law has the right to sign off on contracts, but the council by law, uh, the two statutes that were, uh, combined to authorize the council person to sign, the, the Attorney General often said that, uh, does stand, it has no reason for it to fail, because the council is given, when those two statutes are taken together, allowing, uh, for the closing of the city's finances, as well as the mayor not in the statute authorized after signing a contract, not being considered, based on the Attorney General's opinion, not being considered exclusively to have that right. And that opened the door for the council to pass the order. The council, the ordinance, however, no ordinance can trump state statutes. So the ordinance read that the council president can sign it when the mayor absent, fails, or refuses to sign it. So the mayor is still the, uh, primarily the authorized signer of contract, and if he fails, refuses, or absents, the council can, can have the council president out of contract. There was another issue raised, uh, about the ministerial duty versus execution duties of mayor. Uh, there's a second statement made in the conclusion to the Attorney General's opinion, which points out that when there is a failure of the mayor to sign, even in an area where there's a ministerial duty and all these can sign, that that's when and only when, uh, the council has the right to file a petition to the Alabama Court of Civil Appeals for, excuse me, for man-thema action to mandate, uh, the mayor sign, uh, in, in certain instances. Uh, there's a lot more law and some facts cited in the opinion. I think you all should read it. I think you might have even more questions, because I read it two or three times. I'm gonna read it again two or three times. And I still have some questions with the attorneys. The Attorney General's opinion didn't raise as many questions as it answered, but it did raise one or two other questions. I believe, uh, the bottom line though is you're back almost to square one, uh, that the mayor signs off on contracts, and if he fails, if absence fails or refuses, the council president can sign all, all of the, which is already, already passed. Uh, 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 I, I, I forgot you, I have my Councilwoman Benjamin.
Sure.
Thank you, so, thank you, Mr. President. So that's basically what we've been saying. Uh, I should also say there is, there are any disputes on the phone, uh, who signs contracts. I mean, we've, we've been doing this forever, uh, in or, and in order. We've been doing it in order forever. It's just, it's just the administration that has been confusing. It's ba- basically what you're saying, with the two opinions put together, is what the council has always known, and what the council has always been saying, is that we need you to contract executed, and, and, and the mayor's absent, refusal, or what's the better saying, is, is, is?
Fail, fail.
Or absent, refusal, or fail to sign it. That is what brought us to designated the president in the first place. We, we didn't have to have this in the past. Uh, that's the only thing that brought us to that. Um, and so, it, what the Attorney General is saying is what we felt like the Attorney General would say in the first place. Which, we're, we're all saying the same thing, and we said it before we got the opinion.
I'm out of time. Uh, the next item on, on my report is, uh, avenue contracts, which I think you've already had more or less discussion on with, uh, Mr. Bradsville.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradsville and the, uh, young lady who's saying, that you're not, I think we get it already, but.
Ms. Watkins.
Ms. Watkins. Both of them have reached out to me. Uh, Mr. Bradsville by email only, so far, I think, or we might have, we might have talked on the phone once or two. Uh, but Ms. Watkins and I have spoken on the phone, and I've received, uh, some information. I think, I think most of the information Mr. Bradsville pointed out I've received, if not, if not all of it, I know, I know some of it. And I think the discussion that you've had again is on point with what you can do too. There are generally two or three things you can do with anyone who's feeling the pay tactic. Uh, the question duty is which is the most, which is, which is the most, which is the optimal course of action to take. Uh, uh, Mr. Bradsville's comment, I took to heart it, and think he's, uh, pretty much right on target and on point. When he said you can establish a lien against property, or you can, uh, bring someone in and strip their license, if they're, like, the issue really comes in where someone's absent, and, and either they've gone deep on their business, or they're absentee owner of the business, and you have an issue there of notice before you can do anything. Notice is always, and, and, and extremely issue, important issue in law, uh, how you give notice and when and where, and if you. where, and if you're perfected, notice which would lead to service if there ever were a civil action to recover money. But Councilwoman Youngblood is right too, if they owe the money, they ought to pay it. It's just that simple. And it's not their decision whether or not to pay taxes, everybody has to pay taxes. I don't know too many people who love it or enjoy it, but we all have to pay it. The expression, go and thanks, first, right, and taxes. So I look forward to working with Mr. Bradsville and Ms. Watkins. With Wade, the council, and anyone else to help collect, the money's owed. I've seen the list, it was a pretty extensive list. I'm glad they didn't say over a hundred dollars, that hasn't been trimmed out, but that still leaves, I have to make a dollar, that's a plus, that needs to be collected, and I'm ready to run an eight to help collect it anyway, lawful, legal, if they consider appropriate. There is pending litigation issue, well, not an issue, but a report that's not, or I've got a spreadsheet of some twenty-one, legal matters pending, it's been updated as recently as the last communication we got from the attorneys that are representing the city have through handing out insurance, and I'd be happy to make that recorded, your pleasure, there are twenty-one cases, but all those cases, one or two of them have already been closed out, either settled or ruled down. And that leaves about eighteen or nineteen cases that I can get update you on at your pleasure. If you'd like, I can maybe some of that tomorrow night. I thought it was, that was gonna be more, I'm glad if there were only twenty-one, not fifty or so, as I thought at first that might be. That's my report for now, Mr. President.
Okay. Counselor O'Sullivan. Okay, yeah, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on compliment the attorney for doing his jurisprudence with the landfill. We started out with a twenty-five thousand on five and it gets down to eighteen thousand. Now we got around to fifteen thousand, and I think.
Fifty-plus.
Even fifty-plus, yeah. Well, in any event, it's not as much as it started out to be, and I think that's because of your professional engagement with this very critical situation. The council doesn't understand, we gotta deal with this, and whatever the consent agreement says that we're gonna do, we need to make sure we do it done, because if we don't, I think they will come in and shut us down, and you think you got a problem now, now they can shut us down. So I just want, once again, Mr. Attorney, give us a breath, as we're moving out of this consent agreement, and please praise others, what we need to do in the next level in addressing this critical landfill issue. All right, thanks, Counselor O'Sullivan. Before I go to Counselor O'Sullivan, I see her hand. Is there a timeline that you will be sending that consent order out, Attorney Madison?
Be sending out what, Mr. President?
That consent order.
Uh, the consent order will come back from A-Down. I've already responded to both the original violations and the request for us to supplement the proposed order, consent order. We had not agreed, we had not agreed to a consent order at first, after the council met, we agreed on the consent order. So we, I've responded to the proposed consent order as well. The consent order is due back whenever they finish redrafting, it's pretty much, pretty much drafted itself. And, and, Mr. President, there's one other item, I just realized, I made a copy of, I received a letter from Attorney Brian Till with, with Asmuth. Attorney Till has sent me a letter, it's about a four paragraph letter, but these paragraphs on two or three lines, I can either read it or summarize it, whichever you prefer. I'm all right. In summary, summary of read, that they want twenty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, but then they offer ten percent discount in the third, in the third paragraph to bring that down to nineteen thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. He wants to know if we will accept the offer to sell the claim for a reduced amount, and then he quickly points out in the letter that the offer remains open until five P.M. July the thirtieth, twenty twenty. Look forward to hearing back from me at my earliest convenience. I've already informed you by response, by email response, that it would have to be after this council meeting tomorrow night before I could give them anything I can ask after the council had a chance to hear their, their, from me about this letter and decides what to do.
Hey, hey, Mr. O'Sullivan. Uh, Mr. Till, do we have a contract with Asmuth?
I have not seen the contract, I was at some debate about that the last time.
I feel too, if we don't, if we don't have a contract, they don't take us to go, we don't, we don't have no contract with them.
Well, I didn't.
They have no ground, they have no ground to demand anything from us. There's no contract unless there's a contract signed, not in parties, then we deal with it. There's no contract, I don't know what they do.
Counselor O'Sullivan, Counselor O'Sullivan, I understand your deal, but I was pointing out that I haven't seen the contract. I can't say at this point today it's not, I can't say that category, categorically say that there is not.
Well, well, my point, Mr. Till, is you need to find out whether or not, if there is one, and if there's not one, then my position is, we are, are they messing, because there's no strong contract for them doing business with us, and, and if you're looking at it out of my idea, we really got messing around anyway.
Well, I can find out very easily if there is a contract, because I can ask for it, and, and we can say, if I can be sent one or not sent one, but all I was pointing out is now, I have not seen a contract.
Please pursue to find if there's a contract and share it with the council. If there's no contract, then it's no problem.
I will do that.
Thanks, Counselor O'Sullivan. Counselor O'Malley.
Okay. Get my questions. Uh, Mr. Attorney, going back to all of us that you have contracts that you're working on for.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that Counselor Johnson is using no cleaning detergent.
Uh, that was what the paperwork he sent in said, yes.
Okay, so if you have verified already with the city clerk, if you have verified that company, that's who I'm using as well, I sent it through email, just, just, you know, just giving you a note about that. If you have verified that company with the Harrison license and everything, that's the same company I'm using.
Understood, that's, that should be fine, I understand what you want, that should be fine.
Okay, okay, and then, uh, so the chief was on the fire, she was on there, the legal matter that all of us, all of us know about, are we having a special call, not special call, are we having a?
Executive session.
Yeah, executive session about that.
Well, it depends, it depends on which legal matter, there are, there are several personnel matters, some in and some out of the fire department, so I don't wanna elaborate on that.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take the scene, because it's my opinion, it's been long enough and we haven't talked about it, and in my mind, when it happened, it was, it was something urgent enough for us to move on it real quick, but I'll take, give you what I'm talking about, and maybe, and if it's not, unfortunately, maybe we can add it.
I'll be glad to, I'll be.
I hope you leave, I have a counsel on my bedroom.
Okay, you, you got a, hold on one second.
I can, I can talk with you.
And what I'm saying is, if tomorrow night will probably be an ample opportunity to discuss it in an executive session.
Okay, if you can, only Mr. President, that would be wonderful. And then.
Just, just update me by email on which specific matter, and I'll, and I'll see if I can be ready to address that tomorrow night.
Okay, well, and then, I'm going back to your, going back to the contract. Now, at one point, a few council members came and reported that the mayor said he will not be signing contracts. After some time, you came and reported that you, that the mayor said he will sign, I don't know if you used the word legal or legitimate contract, all legal or legitimate contracts, you came afterward, some, quite some time after that, and you said that, so is it, is it or is it not that the mayor is going to sign contracts?
Well, I, I hesitate to speak on what the mayor is going to do. I can only tell you what he said about the last set of contracts, and I answered that in the email I sent to, to the council.
Okay.
I don't wanna speculate on what the mayor is going to do.
No, I want you to speculate, I'm asking you because you spoke on it and you're bringing us messages from him, and that's what, we have been speaking to him through you, because you initiate all of his stuff, and so what I'm saying is, a few council members reported to us that the mayor said he will not be signing contracts, and then afterwards, you came and reported from the mayor that he will sign, oh, I guess you said legitimate, or maybe you said legal, contract. And so my question was, and it appears you can't answer it at this point, my question was, is he signing contracts or not, or were you talking specifically about contracts at that particular time that we're already in?
You, you asked two or three questions, then had one statement. I don't, I recall having, I recall having the discussion about this, I don't recall what contracts were involved then. What I'm saying specifically is, in the last four contracts I did draft, I included a statement as to those contracts about what the mayor said he would do, and he would not, he said he would not sign them, that's why I offered then, I before the Attorney General's opinion, the alternative that I thought legally might exist, which I believe the council took advantage of.
Okay. Counselor O'Sullivan. Yeah, Counselor, Counselor O'Malley, let me show you, let me show, let me show you my experience. My last contract, uh, it was filed to the mayor's office, the mayor refused to sign it, I saw it, I, I, there's no room for his signature. I, I hear the mayor, the special opportunity, and he refused to sign it, and therefore I, I, I refer it on, drop everything.
Got you, okay, so I'll use the same process, I use the same.
And, and, and all I was saying, Counselor O'Malley, was that's exactly what I said in the email I sent out, I figured it was a creep of a fool ass.
Okay, and I was just, what I was doing is this, because I, I don't like waste time, so if the blanket statement from the mayor was that I am refusing to sign contracts, if there was a blanket statement for all contracts, then I was gonna say, hey, cut the chase, cut, stop wasting my time, just get this on the present, but I'm gonna use the process that Counselor Trigg, uh, stated.
Which is exactly the process I included in my last email.
It's the process of many years and decades of the Southern City Council, so it's the same thing. It's a process of decades of mayors, of all the mayors, so, yeah, I'm familiar with it. So my last question, Mr. Say, you may or may not be able to access this, and you may send it to the zoning board, I don't know, but a citizen has a, has a license in the market, so in the area, in the area that I saw, I saw residents, with, with the citizens said there were three businesses also in that, in that area, and because I'm not the expert, I couldn't tell them about zone B one, two, zone B three, using of that nature, but they have a license for one thing, and they wanted to get a license for another thing. So the process for figuring out which zone, zone B, B one, B two, B three, whatever that means, how are we handling that when a citizen needs to meet before the zoning board, I guess, and they're not meeting? How, how are we handling that?
They are, they are meeting, they are meeting, they are meeting, they have, they have a virtual meeting set up on a map like this. Yes, they're meeting.
They're meeting virtually?
Well, they have a meeting set up next, within the next two weeks virtually, I know.
Okay, okay, and so a citizen needs to contact Mr. Lee directly?
I will contact Mr. Dev Lee and Billy respecter, and he probably will, will follow that to the, to the Board of Adjustments by, by Chairman Moss, I believe, this is Chairman.
Okay, so which Moss?
Johnny the Third, the president of the, the president. No, it's, it's Mr. Moss, not you.
Senior.
How do you?
Senior.
How do you feel?
It's usually some of our authorities.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you, that's, that's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Malley, I also took, I'm trying to, I emailed you what we need to discuss in the executive session, that I, that I think Counselor O'Malley was, was talking about, and also we get, briefly, I asked you guys.
You said it's already in my inbox?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll double check after, uh, before tomorrow morning, by tomorrow morning.
Okay, and before you go, I know Captain Johnson has, has a business item, some of her pay for rent and public works, and I asked you to bring for somebody to guide us, and maybe Counselor O'Malley can chat men also for, for some of their pay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, you know, since we, the first responded, we voted to give them the eighteen hundred dollars for that, for the hazard, I'm, I'm, how you want to word it, but we get a lot of calls from the public works, and I'm, I mean, a lot of calls, even from the, I think, President Boe, you make the calls as well, and of course, then I, I understand that, I think, some people from the Fed, they talk to some of the workers saying that, telling them that they, they are talented, is my answer, but again, I, I told the young man that I have to get some legal money from the attorney, and I, I hope that Counselor O'Malley can shine in on it as well, because, like I told them, if the fund is available for them, of course, we want them to get it, the public work and all sorts of recreation, uh, jobs that work out there, you know, in, in the area. Uh, so, I'm trying to balance, can you look into this, or have you looked into this, do you know whether that eight hundred dollars that was tricked out from the mayor, go towards this button farm and this, this guy? You know, I don't know, I'm not sure, I can't answer that. Like I said, the money is available for them to keep, we want them to have, uh, but I came out, authorized, without authorization, I guess none of us authorized these, that was not the requirement, that it's not in the pledge, you know, so, did you give up a date on that, or are you aware of that? It ain't like.
Oh, did you say eight hundred, you mean the eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars under the, here that's.
Yeah, 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 that's right, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, first of all, that money, and Councilwoman Benjamin was rocking with this too already, that money is, is for, for, uh, the prevention, uh, protection, or dealing with COVID-nineteen related matters, it, it, it does not allow payment to people just to supplement their income, it will not be reimbursable if you do that. Paybook cannot be made for anything that's already included in your budget, you cannot pay for anything for, that was definitely, uh, a budget before March first, I think it is, twenty twenty, uh, you, you have very, you have very strict restrictions on the timeframe within which the money can be spent, I think if the timeframe expires December the thirtieth, twenty twenty. You also have set up a procedure on the council, which I think was a wise idea, because if people think they can just spend money and get it reimbursed, some of them are going to be sadly forsaken, and if you miss that, the money can actually be forced to pay it back. So, those are all things I'm aware of, anything else would require specific questions about why someone thinks they can get, then I would be able, maybe to after that, tonight, I could definitely do, do diligence and research and get back with, with you right away.
But, uh, Phil, I, uh, I'll break down, do you break down the dudes that don't, and email us, so we can maybe explain to our constituents what's going on, what we can do, what we can change, with the employees, and I don't want them to think that we don't want them to have it, and, see, I, I don't have no pocket, a, 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 a separate area that we can look that up at and let them know whether it was available to them or not, and I totally agree, because the money ain't there for that at all, and it's, it's not, so, and also, I think, Mr. President, you mentioned something about grants, and here reminds me of, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I think a lot of things, I get confused with that, the county regional authority grants, where we, where we receive sixty-five thousand dollars strictly for public safety, which encompass the fire department and the police department.
Right, right, okay, but I'm telling you, we need to be. Okay. But some town, we need to be able to break it down, let, let the, so we will want them to take it. We give the public safety, uh, 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 five, four, something. They're not thinking about them. But some town, we know we need to get the word out to them. I'm saying that that was, that, that was a grant from the, uh, 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 you said from Delta Region.
Well, they took five thousand dollars, but then it kind of cost them one thousand. They probably carry a check, but they took five thousand from the Delta Region.
Okay, okay. But if there are any possible, we can get something, so we can maybe, well, we talked about tomorrow. And I know that the guys probably be listening to it tomorrow. Something that we may need to, uh, uh, try to house to explain that tomorrow. Uh, if you could, on your report tomorrow, uh, uh, try to, uh, can, can, uh, let the guys know that we ain't trying to take nothing from them, but the money is available, uh, uh, to be given to them at this time, you know, so.
Well, you, you've already laid out, I think, Councilwoman Benjamin, you can add to that. You've already laid out what the parameters are of the care that's, uh, that is conveyed about which municipalities. And I can, I can, I'm not gonna say anything that's not already in the act. I can't, that's that.
Yeah. Councilwoman Benjamin, you can, you can, you can work with that, uh, on tomorrow in your report.
Yeah, I reported in the meeting, but I, I was definitely reporting in. I reported in with me.
And I appreciate it. What I'm saying, some of them just don't get it. If you go through their council, and the person can help with it, we get calls all the time.
Yeah, the thing is, uh, I get it. I understand. A lot, a lot of people don't understand it. Um, and all, some people don't understand it at all. And, um, I'll try to make it a little bit simpler on tomorrow, as best I can. And I'll try to simplify it a little bit more tomorrow.
Well, Councilwoman Benjamin, it's called selected hearing. Let's say that.
And now, we ain't like we don't want them to have it.
Okay, Councilwoman. I mean, Mr. President, if you, if, if, if you recall, really, oh, when it's COVID-19, uh, initially started out here and just do it, but then they have no need, suggest that we use another terminology. And I share, I share with the council, there are cities that include more than the five police department. There were cities that included public works. There were cities that included other departments in the area of preventing COVID-19. And then, and of course, the council, uh, did not move on it. But then I truly understand why, um, many of the public works, uh, jail services, feel that they are more, uh, in harm's way than ever since the police department side department. Because there are just buildings that has the material every day. And of course, COVID-19 is everywhere. I would hope and pray that, and of course, the city, council cell, cell itself short, are not including more than other departments other than the five police department. It is a fact, other cities have included beyond the five police department, whereas we have not. And I think it is now time that we do include our employees in a way that we can, as long as they are in harm's way with COVID-19, and the fines are reimbursable. So let's, let's be fair, and let's be, uh, compassionate with those workers because they're due to be included. I do, President. I, I, I think Councilwoman Benjamin asked, then Councilwoman Boleyn. But the proof is what they gave them the funds, when they tried to reimburse me. We need to find that out also. Uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, then Councilwoman.
Okay. I was addressing directly off the request of Councilman Johnson. I thought, I thought you all had separated Councilman Johnson and Councilman Ashore for a reason. So now I'm gonna, um, separate my answer from Councilman Johnson's account. I'm gonna switch over to Councilman Ashore now. Councilman Ashore, I think, is talking about public works. And in my mind, I think, uh, Councilman Johnson is talking about recreation. I'm gonna switch over my answer now, too. Okay, I thought I switched it out and said...
No, he's not my opponent, no.
Okay, I thought, I thought they, they were talking about two different things. Okay. Okay, so that's separated. When I answered Johnson, I was talking about recreation, because that's what I thought. Okay, so now I'm talking to, um, Ashore, and I'm talking about public works. And therefore, both of you all will have both of your answers. Um, so if public works is going out into the public and are being, uh, possibly imposed, uh, to the public.
Yeah, every day.
To the elements, that's one of the things, uh, that, that, if it's not on the list, it has to go to the governor. And then the governor sends it to, uh, a tax, uh, another tax court. And then they have to look it over with explanation. There has to be deep explanation, and, uh, even though this is not on the list, this is what we feel as a city, you know, X Y Z. This is what we feel. This is why we feel it. And here's the explanation of why we feel it. Uh, uh, certain things are on the list. I gave that list to, uh, both, uh, well, Melissa Forty-eight says it to me. And then I pointed on to the council secretary and treasurer, who were working on our drawdown. Because I wanted them to look at every poor item, every time a drawdown comes, they can match it against what's actually in there. So I gave it to them so they could be matching our drawdown, so that we are very, very careful and that we are following the rules. And, um, so if it's not in there, we then have to send it to, uh, I think they're calling it pre-clearance, uh...
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh, to find out if it can be done.
Well, at least we can just, uh, let's say, at least, uh, go through the procedure and forward it up to the pre-clearance, and that gets covered. Uh, would that be sufficient enough, then, Councilwoman Ashore?
I think, I think, Mr. President, we need to do all the we can to include these other departments. And as you, if you recall, I think, you know, when this discussion took place, you and I had a conversation about it, and you did some research, and you, you know, a very serious, they included multiple departments other than the fire and the police department includes it. So if, if other cities can include their public works, their jail service, their recreation department, their, uh, whatever department that they have on their list, why can't we?
The thing about, um, the thing about that is... Yeah. The thing about that is, so drawdowns are getting ready to come down or not, like they're going to be approved or refused. So we're at that, we're at that point now, we're ready for drawdowns. So what, what a person, what a, not a person, what a city might start, where they're, where they're running from, they may not. So what I'm saying is, the safe side is here. They're going to get pre-clearance, and then with pre-clearance coming back to say, oh, okay, y'all got a good explanation, drawdown. And then we're doing it. Because we actually have, the governor's address, that'll be...
Well, we might just decide that truly, we can truly make something happen, truly, mad, and decide that, I don't know, two, seven, nine, twenty. And let me start.
Explanation, with that explanation, the problem is...
Three seventy-three.
And the legal department, by the next year, it's probably up to reach the legal department.
We have a lot of work to do, to, to, we have a lot of work to do, Mr. President, to include more departments other than the five police department. Not just say a little amount, but, uh, these other departments deserve it, and they are in harm's way with COVID-19, and we need to include them, and we need to do it.
Okay. All right. Turn it around, uh, get to Councilwoman Benjamin, let's see what we can do to move forward with it. Councilman Boleyn, then we move it on.
I was just trying to ask a summarizing question, just to make sure. Basically, anybody getting tangled with COVID-19 has a problem. Has the ability to ask them for a review to see if this is going to be a situation that they've covered, correct?
Correct.
So if we can show that our, well, for instance, if the tennis courts were open, and parts of the record say that they were out there cleaning tennis courts, so they came up and get people that were out there playing tennis, and maybe had COVID-19, so they could get paid, right?
Yeah. You're making free television now, probably, yeah.
Right. So public works is out there doing their job, and they're running around people jogging or walking in the neighborhood and things like that. But technically, if we could validate that exposure or exposure to a COVID-19 item, then the pre-clearance people may clear a court if not somebody else could possibly clear a court's plate.
Yes. And that's what we're asking, that's what we're asking the crowd to move forward.
Yeah, it has to, I can answer that. That, I can answer that. Um, it, that it has to be actually open to even first speed it up. So I, I get what you're asking, too, uh, Councilwoman Boleyn. I get exactly what you're asking.
Good. Thank you so much for, and I guess that she tells us what's covered and not covered, correct?
Correct. Correct.
And if we also had a, a, a worker who was just going back to work, he was out, he's, he's got to go.
From where? From where?
He's part of the work, but that's the point. But, you know, we don't know, you know, from where. But he, when he sent out, he was passed, but he's back to work now. So, uh, you know, the thing about it, he don't know exactly where it's come from. But again, who knows, you know?
Okay. We'll move forward with that, but make it to a way to move forward, President.
Uh, going to, uh, one other information I, I received. Uh, today, a three-page contract to services from, uh, the YMCA, uh, and the person who, uh, won Maxwell. The document was sent to me in PDF on that. I'd asked if that could be heard, she converted, she got them one to convert. The conversion of it left us doing probably more work to try to get it ready for tonight. Being that if we had, my secretary's, and it's just probably just gone on from the beginning, uh, from, from the start, uh, in PDF, from that, uh, on and on. But it's about the vote the council on means to provide support to the Y from the lodging fees that are collected. Uh, and I believe the discussion was whether or not AIA would continue then D for a period of time. And I think, uh, she asked if I did, the council voted, uh, council ran up, I think, there. Uh, uh, no, he recommended one year, that I think that was some sort of compromise to a two-year period to do that. I just wanted to confirm that, because I haven't seen the minutes that I was listing in on the vote. And I believe you voted to extend the support from the lodging, uh, collection of the city for another two years to, uh, the YMCA, if I'm not mistaken. That document will be ready, uh, to present to you tomorrow, too.
Okay. Uh, I see Councilwoman Benjamin has, and I have one more question, uh, Charlie, and before we move on. And Councilman Ashore, you might want to bring that secretary, I, I found a mystery court, but I'm... See, Councilwoman Benjamin has, Councilwoman Benjamin, and then I'm gonna come back with my question, then the secretary, and then we'll move to the business part.
Okay. I have, I have texted our administrative team, uh, just a copy that one page from, uh, the COVID distance thing, that the company that one page that had payroll. And I, and if you all are looking at your text messages in your, on your email, if I have your email, I send it to your email. If I have your text number, I send it to your text. And read along number seven with me, if you please. And it, um, number seven is concerning payroll. And it says, this may include public cases, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And so, uh, as we, as the legal, hopefully, the explanation is gonna come from the legal department. Uh, and, um, as the explanation is being crafted for, for the departments that are in question, uh, because you all can also see, and, you know, any COVID-19 payment that's not included in the item description above, please make it blank. And so if you, while it's being crafted for pre-clearance, uh, use this little page right here that came from the, uh, whole document. Use this description page, uh, to craft it as you go, and it'll help. I think it'll help a lot.
All right. Thanks. This is my first time sharing. Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Um, I'm trying to, uh, before I go to, uh, Councilman Ashore, I know we've been dealing with that Wi-Fi contract. Uh, my concern is with the Wi-Fi contract. The fund that came from the Delta Regional, and this, uh, grant has been on our books, uh, for a specific period of time. And I know with grants might have been on your book for a spec, a specific period of time that could affect your, uh, your audits and stuff like that. Could it be possible that we can do, because I know it's not gonna be a contract with the screen, because of the fact that was in between SRA and the city government, as well as was in between attorney? Would it be possible if we could do a MOU, Mr. Green, pay him that amount, over two thousand dollars, and do a, um, RMP for other hand for anyone who would like to finish the job? Would that be possible? Because we definitely need to, um, move forward this grant, because if we turn this money, uh, turn it back over to the Delta Region, it can be Delta's another in the future for us getting any federal funds, uh, funded after originally. Would that be possible, if we can do a MOU or something along the line? Go ahead on over with, uh, paying up that thirty hundred thousand bucks.
Okay, yeah. But that's only second part. But it's the second part of that question, uh, as far as an RMP to, you know, us to finish. I only need to make sure that the contract wasn't changed, or is it going to be doing any RFP?
Okay. That's what I was asking. Councilman... I'm saying, uh, I'm not, okay, I couldn't make that before, so... Councilman, I'm...
Yeah, I have a question for the attorney. Uh, I turned in a, a contract today. Uh, have you received, uh, paperwork?
I received the email requesting the contract, and I, off the top, uh, Councilman ran up, I pointed out that yours, your contract should be your one, so turn it in tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you. But let me thank you there. Uh, thank you, Councilor. We're getting back to that. Will we do move forward with that, or we going to get that off the books?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So would you go and do the MOU? Will you move forward tomorrow?
Yes, sir. Uh, and I was, I was only pointing out that that's the part two of that. It obviously need to be confirmed, what portion of the contract is unexecuted, and what the balance of the funds would be.
Okay. Because like I say, and the reason why I said a MOU, because we gonna need some documentation whenever you deal with grant files, and they knew that it was never a contract, no executed. So that's why, that MOU, that can be, uh...
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's issue off the top with the MOU. I just want to confirm, that's the second part of your question, like RFP. What was executed, what was executed, what funds are on hand, after any favor?
Okay. Where to get with that? And I would suggest, too, maybe call Mr. Green, and, um, and, uh, I guess we'll get that other information from him. But I think it was about, what, thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
Uh, this is Attorney, uh, Attorney Harrison. I, I talked to, uh, you know, I had a contract with, uh, Smithman Construction Company with the payment to pay, uh, bricklayer and, uh, over on that daughter and, uh, roof, roof, uh, street. And the timeframe, uh, time we were waiting, uh, for the date for them to start, and on the date on my contract, when they were supposed to start, they had, uh, another project going on. And I talked to Mr. Smithman to, uh, I talked to someone from over Smithman Contract Company to date. Um, so I would have to go back in the date that they were supposed to start. They said that they were doing a million-dollar contract, uh, business at the time that they would have to give me another date in on my contract to come in and do what I need to be done in those locations. So I would have to change the starting date from the time that it was supposed to start. On my contract that's already been approved, number seven, I have to change the date. There was just another thing.
They give you this amendment, that contract, correct, with starting?
Yes, but the, but the amendment just has to be approved by the council. It's not a problem to them.
That's why, that is why I...
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a date, Councilwoman? Do you have a date?
Well, I'm waiting on him. Well, uh, we sent him, uh, we, 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 we sent him the, uh, the contract so we can make sure to give me the date that he wants to change. Well, I'm waiting on him, well, uh, we sent him, uh, we, 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 we sent him the, uh, the contract so we can make sure to give me the date that he wants to change on there. Because he said that, if he doesn't do it, I will have to go search for somebody else, because he said he in a business that, uh, paid, uh, where he makes millions, millions of dollars, and he dealing with me with this contract with the slow process with the, with the council, he said that, uh, he would give me another date, so I'm hoping in the morning that he would give me another.
Get the call, tell him to move on tomorrow.
I can put it to, uh, so I can put it to the vote, for vote tomorrow, change the date to the date where he's gonna do.
Okay, please, we can put it on the shift, she can give you my floor, uh, for we can place on.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna work on it in the morning, I'm gonna see what it's being in the morning.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman Short.
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, I, uh, I, uh, became aware of a memorandum that was sent out to all funeral home operators by Mr. John D. Crowe Jr., the cemetery director, for the day of July of twenty, twenty twenty. And let me read exactly what it says, reference Saturday and Sunday's fills. To the limited manpower in the cemetery department, Saturday and Sunday fills cannot be accommodated for the notice. I regret, I regret their convenience, this may cause, thank you for your understanding, because there was an uproar in the city behind this. And I went out to talk to Mr. Crowe, meaning the chair of the Public Works General Services Committee, which is cemetery councilumber, that committee. And he explained to me, he had no other choice but to minimize weekends true, because he only had two workers that was, um, employed in the department. And, uh, I asked him, what would it take to eliminate, to get the funeral services back to any day of the week? Because when you're talking about the loss of your loved ones, people don't need to be having count with each other in the city. And he told me at the bare minimum, it would take at least three more workers. Uh, and of course, Mr. President, you also had to talk with Mr. Crowe initially, that was gonna be a recommendation that he bring all three more workers, now he did tell me that the current workers are only making minimum wage. And it's very hard to hire people nowadays at minimum wage. So I thought, he, he told me the bare minimum that he think he should come in at his nine dollars an hour and raise those workers that are already at seven twenty-five, they live up to nine dollars an hour, that would give him five minutes that would be charged with having billion to do this, and the city silver with the most of our citizens that wants. Now, Mr. President, you had a different perspective, uh, on what Mr. Crowe and I had talked about, you not sharing it with my colleagues?
Yes, uh, he did say, uh, uh, what you just mentioned, but my concern is with the budget, uh, right around the corner, upcoming budget, right around the corner. Uh, again, it could be a slippery slope if we just go ahead and move them up to nine seventy-five, whatever it was. My suggestion was to, and I talked with Attorney Madison, if we could get a contract to employ until the fiscal year. When we look at our budget, and looking at, uh, particularly unemployed, Crowe was, uh, was a really with that because when you're looking at the salary, the minimum wage, with the contract, we can up that salary a little bit more due to the fact we're not paying benefits, and as well as not paying the benefits, we're looking at only two to three months until we, uh, complete the budget. And, uh, Mr. Crowe felt, you know, that we could move forward with that, uh, the contracts, uh, with these employees. And, uh, they were very shocked, uh, because, you know, they're, they're making the nine seventy-five whatever they deal, such as tax return. And one of the concerns that he had, you know, he told, um, uh, mentioning the fact that, uh, let's get them on the weekend. But if we raise that salary to nine seventy-five to contracts, that can be an incentive where, uh, they would be willing to work on the weekends and not only, uh, we're not looking at the fact that, you know, benefits, and they could, they were looking at that slippery slope, where it could be some labor issues by, you know, jumping in for two thousand dollars an hour. And we have all that employees, especially the seven forty-five, we wanna be fast-able with all that employees. And I would suggest, that's why I suggest do it contractually, instead of just going in, uh, househouse and giving it to them. And then, like I say, with the budget process around the corner, that's something we can look at, and, and that's why I'm saying.
But I think, I think, Mr. President, this is the best thing that we can do, because one, my number one concern is to, uh, uh, that makes any hardship or any grieving families that are losing their loved ones. They do not need to be saddled with this issue. I will hopefully my party to understand the securities of this action, and put on the cemetery general line, Mr. Crowe and Luke Smith, with the contractor pre-worker in nine seventy-five, and, uh, give him the fine workers that he, that he would need, that when it really, he was talking when it comes down to people who are in love with.
Okay, I was hoping to follow, to follow up, Councilwoman Short, this October, they'll have a hundred and fifty-five jurors on the weekend. Since October.
Okay, so, Mr. President, if, if this is in the green with the council, we can move forward with this temporary banage, putting this banage immunity, and will present any hardship or any grieving family, and give it to the next administration to fix.
Yes, uh, Mr. President.
Uh, Council, uh, Councilwoman Short, can you say what do, do on the weekend, uh, when, when they have a funeral? Because they don't see, I mean, they don't see the grave, they don't come to the grave, well, okay, I know they do this, open up the shop, open, give you some.
Councilman, I'm not having any idea, I'm just telling you that Mr. Crowe, cemetery director, has sent a letter to funeral home directors telling them they were giving them standard and recent fills, and he was just thinking, the first of nine hours to get that eliminated, and this is all we're trying to do.
Well, I, I don't know if it's, what else, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just waiting for that. And, and, yes, I'm just asking, of course, that's, okay, yeah, they, they dig the graves.
And they cover the graves as well, uh, but what happened, Mr. Miller and Hall.
Uh, I, I think it's, uh, one of the last ones he had to do, because he still have a backhoe, he had ended up, uh, uh, opening up the grave himself.
And I think covering because he didn't want him to do it.
Well, that's, that's what the, uh, the spirit was to do, they'll dig, they'll, they'll locate this, the grave site, they'll dig it up, uh, the funeral home put their own, um, uh, that box, and I will, I'm gonna be calling that.
Uh, that, that, oh, that was.
Oh, they put their own box in there, and set it up, they set their own tent up, that's the chair, that's the, that's everything for to put the body down, once the body go down, uh, and I think that's when, uh, uh, then the, the, uh, I mean, the, uh, the, uh, Mr. Crowe then will come back and, and, and tell me everything I can choose, you know? Yeah, I feel like.
So, Mr. President, so, Mr. President, is there a way you could ask Mr. Crowe to come to the meeting tomorrow and he tell him what they want to do? Because, you know, it's, it's, it's about working weekends, you have about a weekend, he can, uh, maybe he can let one of the guys work, uh, Saturday, and he can, uh, Friday off, uh, next guy works Sunday, and he get money off, you know, it just waves around it, but, uh.
I did ask, I asked him about it, everyone fixed schedule, and for my, I think you said, one of the guys, did you see Sydney? He was old or something like that, to that effect.
Yeah.
But, but I, I would have, I would have, if I come tomorrow, I wish I would have known, I would have brought him to the, uh, work session today. But I would have, uh, I, I would have him tomorrow, uh, to, 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 uh, comment before we move forward. Yeah, I was hoping to, I was hoping to, 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 Mr. President, because I only could check, us exactly what entails with the, uh, burial of people loved ones out there at the, at the three cemeteries.
Okay. Yeah, Councilwoman Benjamin. I hear you, hold on for a moment, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Uh, okay, thank you, thank you, my question, uh, was according to classification, very similar to the Councilman Randolph. With that, uh, uh, public outcry, uh, the Councilwoman Short mentioned happened, I just started reading comments of the citizens and, and some who seemed like they might have been expert or whatever, but I'm not an expert at this, but I did read some comments that says that, um, the, so I didn't know what open and close meant, right? So I'm reading for, uh, classification, and so I'm, my, my hand has been open a while while you all were talking, uh, concerning classification. Because open and close literally means I'm opening and closing the, uh, entryway to the, the, the site which we can access, during, after my, every comment, or does open and close mean I open, and then I, I dig up, it's at the job on the funeral ceremony, which I read several citizens say, that is what the funeral home gets paid to do, uh, from the bereaved family. And so that's what I was asking, uh, Mr. Crowe, since he now being invited to the house meeting, my, uh.
Uh-huh. Hey, can you go ahead and tell the meeting a few hours, what's going on tonight?
I think you asked me to tell the meeting, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, I'm gonna try to get what's going on for tonight. Go ahead.
Oh, you're gonna get off the line to get Mr. Crowe, okay, okay, so let me, uh, Nikki Ellison, go ahead and text me, because I'm not at my, my desktop. Go ahead and text me here, Jennifer, so, uh, my second question, uh, Mr. Attorney, are you still on the phone?
Yeah.
Okay, my second question, well, this is not a question for you, I guess it would be for Mr. Crowe. Uh, those five workers that he's, he's saying that he needed, uh, those five workers, my question is, will they, will there now be people to take care of the cemetery as Mr. Lamarcus knows, is, uh, currently doing along with other citizens who are currently taking care of our cemetery with five people on deck, or, or maybe it's three extra people on deck, with a total of five on deck? What happens to the grooming, the maintenance, and the manicure of our, of our, um, cemetery?
Uh, I, I've got a comment to make about that, I didn't, I wasn't sure if Councilwoman Short was on addresses or not. But I'm looking at, um, a, a text, and, and email messages from the mayor this afternoon, uh, about, about two thirty this afternoon, because he's in receipt. Uh, he's wondering if the RMP for the cemetery grass cutting was on the agenda, he didn't see it rather. And last week he said he gave Councilwoman Short, uh, uh, some stakes for getting our services, all the cemeteries he wanted, just to remind, uh, the council of that request.
If, if you don't recall, I had mentioned that the last, that the last meeting, that the mayor was, uh, thinking about outsourcing the care of the cemetery, and of course, we didn't know exactly what that involved, and I went to him to find out exactly what he's talking about, was he talking about the other detail or what? He said, no, he was talking about outsourcing the lawn services in the, in the, in the, in the, when the grass cutting of pre-cemeteries. He also stated that it was right for each cemetery to have its own contractors, which will allow the city to expand and do business a little against one company. And of course, the council, uh, uh, went ahead and acknowledged that the new flow with the RLPs. And of course, uh, I, I'm not in the seat of hearing RLPs, uh, uh, I mean, not to my knowledge, I don't know if any RLPs have been submitted. Uh, I did, uh, recommend that he did with Mr. Crowe to, uh, to identify what is expected of those contractors that will be seeking to do business with the city. So, right now, Mr. Attorney, I would hope, I hope that you can give the matter file out here, he's in receipt of the RLPs. And when I, when I, when I receive the RLPs.
And I'd be glad, that sounds like President Boydover trying to get Mr. Crowe on the phone right now.
Okay, any other questions for City Attorney before we move on to business, I, you are?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, uh, um, um, listen, uh, Attorney Nelson, I asked on the last conversation, uh, I got a call from the athletic director from the, uh, some hot about, uh, I guess the football season will begin, I guess, uh, on time, uh, uh, and the question was asking about the fans, uh, in the stadium, in the, in the stadium. You know, fans would be attending to the game, be sitting in the stadium, if there would be some rules, or would the mayor allow, uh, the fans come to the stadium? Uh, I, I'm not sure you got a chance to talk to him about that, and I just think.
I did, okay, and you asked about, and you asked, I believe, about the tennis court as well, somewhat, somewhat, yeah.
Right, right.
Uh, I, I asked the mayor about the, I think, voting of those two areas apart, and, uh, he said that he would be willing to do that if the budget was meant to deal with the person that has to handle that.
Okay, okay, that means that we do need some people, I just tried to clean it up, and right now we don't have to worry about that right now.
Well, that's as far as G elaborated, I, again, I, I don't wanna speak for the words in this, but that's as far as we want.
Okay, okay.
Deal, so.
Okay, I mean, what about the?
Excuse me?
Okay, that's, that's, that would also, uh, go toward the tennis court, well, the.
He mentioned, I think he mentioned, I think he, I mentioned both the, the, uh, the, the, possibly, uh, high school football and rock court and the tennis court, he said the same thing for both.
Well, this is longer than just football, I mean, I don't. They, they share as well, I mean, it's open as well.
Again, again, please don't shoot the miss, please don't shoot.
Oh, no, 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 I, 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 I see, I could, but, but I just, they reported on that part, but if he calls us about that, we'll move forward with it. I told him.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lamarcus.
Yeah, okay, what you.
If, if you have it, I, we're gonna move to the business items, Phil, uh, we have a report to the report on tomorrow, I hear, I'm going, who is it? Uh, me, James, Councilwoman Tom, okay, you have another one? Okay, this is, this is. No, this is not.
One more.
Relate to, under, uh, this, this is something I want to ask the question on the COVID, ready to, on the COVID nineteen. Okay, you still have a question?
I know where you are.
I, what's her?
I want, let me get off of the city attorney, okay, oh, Doc Waters, okay?
I think, uh, Pauline wants to be the last question.
Yeah, just, just, just to ask the city attorney, uh, to Councilman Johnson's point, if you could just ask the question specifically one more time about opening the gates up on the tennis court and letting people play tennis, uh, versus mowing and shielding and striping and citizens, they got to come in and stadiums and tennis courts just open the gate and see if people can play, that's, this is all we're asking for, so that could just be asked one more time, just directed that way, that'd be really great.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
All right, thank you, so, and, and we're going on to business items, and the first one happens to be mine, that's the COVID nineteen report. We talked a bit about it tonight, you all, I'd like to get the full report on Tuesday, but let me add and, um, just give you a little bit of update on the drawdown process. Uh, uh, last time I told you all, we were trying to send a meeting with Senator, State Senator Foye, with our administrative assistant and our, uh, treasurer. They did meet, and, uh, it was a very good meeting concerning the drawdown process, uh, so that we can get our money as we go along, our reimbursement as we go along. They will start the first week of August, uh, concerning the first drawdown, uh, we had everything in except the city clerk. We didn't have the city clerk, um, either purchase order number, or, or something, because that, I think it was purchase order number, uh, we had everybody else's invoice. And so hopefully the treasurer and administrative assistant have that now, so that we can fit in the entire package together. Uh, it was advised, I think, that we do it either, uh, once per month or twice monthly, if we deem it necessary, but we're not just sporadically sending drawdowns in. And so we wanted to capture everything that we had done thus far, and, uh, so we, we had everybody's invoice and all information except for the city clerk, and hopefully that has been, has come in now. I'll give a full report on tomorrow, and I'll make sure that I, um, reiterate those restrictions that come with the usage of the COVID nineteen, uh, crime, and those rare, rare man, if it's a question, if those funds are misused, I'll do that. So number two item is off on our entertainment, go ahead, go ahead.
Hey, this is, uh, Mayor President Corntel, we do have, uh, Mr. Crowe on the line now, Mr. Crowe called it, it's a big.
Okay, I think Councilman Johnson had a question before I did.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Mr. Crowe, good afternoon, good evening. Good afternoon, good evening.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Hello, councilwomen and men, this is Ben West.
Hey, uh Mr. Cole, uh I think the council right now uh related question to what do the uh the workers do uh in uh funeral service prepare? What do these guys do on a Saturday? Uh can you tell us what they do once you locate the spot where they're gonna be laid rest at? What your guys just
They come out and and close the grave. So sometimes it's uh, most of the time it's more than one service on Saturday. This past Saturday, we had three. One in U I Oak and two, two uh in uh Lorenzo Harrison and plus a cremation.
Okay, do they open it, do they dig it up first or do they don't do it?
No, not on, not on, not on Saturday. We have them dug, we have them prepared before Saturday.
Okay, but y'all do dig them though?
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay, that's okay, I'm gonna make some, go ahead, let them know what y'all do. Y'all do dig the grave.
Yeah, explain, explain what happened. Explain to everyone what happens and that way we're speaking the same message.
Right, okay. The funeral homes advise us when they have a uh service that wants to use one of our cemeterials. They prepare a planning sheet and send the planning sheet over to our office. In some cases, the the families do not own a grave space and we have to meet the family either by our office in U I Oak or either we have to go to Lorenzo Harrison and meet them to see if they have a family plot or if they're gonna have to buy a spot in one of the uh sections where we bury. After they've identified the spot, uh our employees will come and uh take care of of having the grave prepared on the day that they're gonna have the service.
Break it down a little bit, Cole. I mean, we just prepared, just go to the dig.
Yeah, break that down, break that down.
Well, we we after the, after we go and after they've purchased the grave or identified their family plot, we we go out there and set up and we dig the grave. And then on the day of the service, the funeral home comes and sets up there. They they do the setup, that's the chairs, the chairs, they put in the vaults. And generally we're there when the the funeral homes put in a vault in case they need any assistance. If perhaps uh we didn't quite get the hold exactly the right size, but normally we do have it correct. And then uh then it's that part of it's over until the day of the funeral. Then uh they hold the funeral and then we come out and we cover the grave and clean up around the grave and and leave it looking nice. And we also, because we hadn't been able to cut grass everywhere, my policy is that we do the absolute best job we can in the immediate area of the grave space so that the family's not standing out there in uh high grass while they're trying to bury their loved one. So so far we've been able to do that. Uh I did have two men that were backhoe operators, but now I'm back to one because one of them got transferred to public work, so I'm down to two people. And that's where my situation comes in. These two men, if we have funerals every Saturday and Sunday, we don't have a lot of Sunday funerals, we do have a lot of Saturday funerals, but my two men would be working six days a week uh and never get a day off. Uh and I really need, I I need two backhoe operators because if one of them, if if the one I have decides he don't wanna work on Saturday and he doesn't come, then I have nobody to take care of the service that I've already scheduled. That's why I made the decision last week not to have any Saturday or Sunday funerals because it seems that my men have the choice of where they wanna come and work overtime and I cannot require them to do that. So uh if I schedule two or three funerals on a Saturday like last Saturday and they decide not to come, they don't want work, I've got nobody to cover up the graves.
Mr. Cole, let me ask this is counsel specifically. So when uh when workers sign up, I heard you say they have a choice of weekend and I do understand that totally. You know how you're stuck with jobs sometimes and and people uh tell you up front there will be some overtime, there will be overtime, there will be some weekend work. Can you do this? Is this, is that, and I have another question as well. Is that actually the same, you said they have a choice and I do understand choice uh at the workout where I'm trying to get some clarity on what this is about because this is, this is not the traditional type of job.
All of, all of our position descriptions say that you may be required to work uh a non-standard work week. And I believe, I'm not absolutely one hundred percent sure. I believe and I can verify that, let you know tomorrow, that it does say weekend, weekend. May be required.
That holds up my request and other duties for more.
Well, it's not even, it's not, it's not even Mr. Langley because this is a non-traditional type of job, which is why I was asking that question. Was it in the interview, was it said, is it written on the document? I wanted to know that.
It's in the, it's on, it's on the, it's in the job description, it is in the job description.
Well, then you have it, you do have the right, it's just that you don't have, you said you can't ask them to do that. They signed up for it, they they signed up for it, so um so here's my other thing because I also understand this. Um you are a short standing, you mean for a man. Uh will they, uh once you get up to uh five or whatever that golden number is for them, whatever the number is for now, I know you would like that more approximately. But if when you get up to the five, will they, will they then be manicuring somewhere? What will these five people do uh when it's not Saturday?
Well, they could cut the grass, they would cut grass, they cut trash throughout the cemetery. Uh
Okay.
I assure you, there would be busy uh one day.
Okay, okay, okay. I just wanted to understand that part there. Finally.
I think Councilor Randolph and then Councilor Johnson.
Okay, now I have my to finish, Mr. President. Finally, Mr. Cole, you may or may not have this answer right there, but I want, I I wish this, I really wish it was now at our Tuesday meeting because the public is here because the public say a lot of things sometimes that's not true and you may not know the answer to this and you may know the answer to this. Who gets paid to uh dig the grave? So many people are saying the funeral home gets money from the families to do that and so the city does not have to do. Who gets paid to uh wash the grave? Now who gets paid to manicure the property?
I'd be happy to answer that. The city of Phil would get paid to dig the grave.
Okay, okay.
The confusion might be the family pays the funeral home and we build the funeral home and the funeral home pays the city of Phil by every month.
And there you have it, and I I wish this was Tuesday. I wish this was a Tuesday meeting now.
Well, I'd be happy to tell you on Tuesday if you need me to, that's not a problem.
I think we do, Mr. Cole, I I just really think this needs to be heard on the radio and however else it's broadcast on Tuesday, but the entire public always comes in on a Tuesday. And I do, I think what you said would clear everything up.
Yeah, tonight, just want to go ahead and look at the logistical things like, you know, some of the
Yeah, glad you did, glad you did.
We'll bring, we'll bring it back on uh tomorrow too, so uh the community can hear what you're saying.
Well, let me say one thing. Families have the, families have the option to come pay us at the cemetery office.
All right.
Or the, in some cases, the funeral home does not want to stand for the opening and closing on the grave or the purchase of the grave space. I think you probably can understand that, okay? So they require the family to come pay us correctly. But in ninety-nine percent of the cases, we build the funeral home and and then they pay us at the end of every month for that much or so uh services that we did, the opening and closing and if uh appropriate for the grave space. So so somebody say what I, I just wanna clear, I wanna say that because somebody may come and say, well, we paid some money at the cemetery office. Yes, they may have, we we do take money there and it's documented and it's always turned in at the tax and license office and repeated for. Just to make that clear, okay?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, everything you said makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh Councilor Randolph and Councilor Johnson, they will move on to back to the business. Okay. Oh, oh, okay. Mr. President, Mr. President.
Hello, Councilor, hello. Uh this is still on my reporter and I'm not too
Okay, hello. And I'll ask some questions, then we're gonna come back to you to finalize it. But I know Councilor Randolph has a question, then Councilor uh Al or the Councilor Johnson want to follow up. Yeah, I do, here's up here report.
Councilor Randolph, go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Cole, for my last question, he said the plan now.
Uh yeah, yeah, listen, I'll go in with him right now.
Go ahead, I'll be a counsel.
I mean, uh the crew. Go ahead, Councilor Johnson, Councilor Johnson. Uh uh, what, what, the question I wanna ask, and I know you said that you got two guys to come in and sometimes they possibly they may not be able to come in and we already got a funeral service uh started and the guys won't show up, this is some come up. Are you able to go and run the backhoe yourself to fill that thing in or uh because
That's what I gotta do. I I'm not qualified on the backhoe, Councilman.
Okay, okay. Oh, that's what I was asking, because I know last time it's like in the world where Rob Bridge uh worked with it and when they came show up, then he'd get on there and hit with the backhoe. And I was just wondering uh that you know how to operate it well yourself, so you go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Councilor Johnson, go ahead. Yeah, Mr. Cole, when your, when your uh, when your communication went out to all the funeral homes and I came out to talk to you, you really painted a good picture about the dilemma that you were facing. I think this council now is poised to help you out in this situation with the three men that you said that you need will get the city back to building funerals and the other week they had agreed the families need the service. So I just wanna thank you for availing yourself. I'm gonna thank you for being here tomorrow night to continue to talk about this issue and therefore the public will really understand the dilemma that you were facing and why you had, had no other choice but to send this communication out to the funeral home directors. However, even though you sent this out, this is something that I as a council person could not allow to be the law of the land because when you lose a loved one and all of us hang out, you know, they don't need to be followed with uh politics and the issues of a city. So we look forward for you being here tomorrow night and to further to communicate with the council as well as the citizens. But this council is determined to get you what you need, although it may be a severe delay and it will reduce the need to continue to provide quality funeral services for the citizens who lost loved ones in this city.
Yes, sir, that's my goal. My dilemma was that I have to send an overtime request to my superior to have the overtime approved every weekend and and if the people don't wanna work, then I don't have, uh I don't have any need to send it to be approved. If they will work, then I send it to get it approved. But having been told that I cannot force my employees to work on Saturday, uh the choice is I don't wanna go to work every week and have to struggle and figure it out how am I gonna put uh support these handles on the weekend?
Uh, Mr. Cole. Hey, okay, did that come from the HR department or something?
Yes, sir, it did. Well, I'm not, I'm not proficient. I can, I know how to uh conduct these, help support conducting funeral services, but I'm not confident of all the uh light
First of all, yeah, that's why it's gonna be so important we we admit that first of all, right? Councilor Randolph, are you back before we This is by the Council on Benjamin. Yeah, I'm listening.
Mr. Cole, I got, I got one thing, what, two questions is uh you know, that's the thing, that's the, that is people's parents, you know. It might be a tip to tip, but they don't, they don't have it, they don't have it. So what you do is you could have changed their work schedule from two to two to five. And you're trying to say that's what it's gonna be?
I I don't, Councilman, I don't have the authority to change the work schedule.
Okay, you, well, how come you don't?
I I think that would maybe the council does or or HR.
No, look, this, this, this is not HR. This is, that's, that's me. I was gonna say that they can change my, my day off at here in town. And you're telling me that you cannot work two to five? So what, what, how does you think the weekend, they say, okay, we, 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 we're gonna do some on Monday to Tuesday, how come you didn't do that?
It was in the way. I, I, I didn't make my decision. I didn't make my decision based on who has funerals on the weekend. I made my decision on the fact that I didn't have anybody to work who ever had funeral on the weekend.
They have to work, that's their duty.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry. I, I'm very sorry that that Council people, I'm sorry, but the guidance, I'm sorry, but the guidance I was given, if my two men didn't wanna come on Saturday, they didn't have to come. So I, I enjoy Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'm leaving, I'll, I'll finish this, but go ahead.
Well, I'm just, I was told that I, I, I could, if my men did not want to volunteer to come to work on Saturday, I could not make them come to work on Saturday. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, it's not so much, it's not so much here, Mr. Cole. I know what this is, where this is the matters, Tom. Uh HR, which is day to day operation, but my law, you know. I live it out there. Go ahead, ask your second question, Councilor Randolph.
I'm not able to work.
Well, how many men, the, the folk of mayor laying off everybody with this bogus layoff thing? How many men you had out there told me?
We have eleven men working outside.
Oh, okay. That's, that's why I, I wanted to know how many men you had. Wait, now you have eleven to two, right?
Yes, sir.
So how, why, you know, the council been talking about hiring, hiring uh estimate the high people back? You know, because we need help. But I never heard you as a public, as uh cemeterials, I read the question, didn't need to come back. But the thing like I was gonna say, I need some men out here. But for some reason, you want to
I said that I, I don't, I don't, I don't come to y'all because I have a superior and my superior knows what I need to to run the cemetery. Uh I, I believe you and I are both military men, Councilman LaShore. I follow the chain of command. I, I don't drop the chain of command and come to y'all and tell you that I'm, I'm uh about to crash and burn. I tried to follow the chain of command, uh so uh it's beyond me.
Oh, okay. Well, I appreciate you, um I appreciate the work that you do, Mr. Cole, don't get in wrong.
Yes, sir, I know you do. Let me just say, let me just say this for y'all. We've had a hundred and fifty-seven funerals since the first of October that this fiscal year. That's FYI. Half of them have been on Saturday or Sunday, most on Saturday. So half of the funerals that, half of the ones that we do are Saturday funerals. We get uh three hundred dollars more, uh two hundred dollars more on each service that's held on Saturday uh than we do for a weekday service.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. I was, let me ask this information. So everything you have listed, who pays, who opens the grave, who closes the grave, all of that makes sense. Uh Councilman, Councilman uh Randolph gave you some cultural information that says, I understand you take into consideration because you have that right and the job description said weekend. Councilman Randolph gave you some very cultural information about black people. And we have funerals on Saturday, it's tradition, it's almost like
Yes, sir.
That's it, that's the day. funerals on Saturday, it's tradition, it's almost like, that's it, that's the day, so when he, when he gave you some cultural context to, to kinda work with, and so if, if you have the rule to say no Mondays and Tuesdays, and it doesn't affect, um, it doesn't affect anyone, 'cause everybody else can have any other day. He gave you some cultural information, but I think you need to take into consideration.
Yes, ma'am, Council, Councilwoman, I appreciate that, but that's not the dilemma that I, I, I'm fully aware and I understand, and I, I, you know, I've lived until my, my life because of my military years, I've never seen where there was any difficulty with supporting funerals, and I have no problem with, I have no problem with that, uh, but I don't mind you, uh, reed- reeducating me on that, but I'm, I'm aware of that, but I didn't do that with any malice toward anyone when I made that decision.
Oh, yeah, I don't think anybody thinks that, uh-uh. I don't think anybody on that phone thinks that.
Okay, so when my boss. Go ahead. Well, when my boss tells me that I cannot, that my people have to agree to work on Saturday, I don't wanna get down to Saturday and not have anybody to work. I, I can't apparently tell them that they have to work on Saturday, so if I can't tell them they've got to work on Saturday, there's somebody bigger than me gotta be able to do that.
You're in a dilemma. We, we got, you're in a dilemma.
Thanks, that's my respect. Okay, Mr. President, uh, we'll make sure that you are, um, on tomorrow, I'll make sure you get the contact information, call, um, to give us information over the airwaves. Again, thank you for what you do, and, uh, I know you are in a compromised position, but, uh, we look forward to hearing from you on tomorrow.
My, because we have worked hard, but they, I know that they wanna, I have not encouraged them one way or another about this Saturday, but I understand that, uh, they need, they need time off also, and they're working, and sometimes at least six days a week, and it's sometimes seven, you know, they don't have any time to have, have any personal time, that they can schedule something, knowing that they don't, uh, not have to come to work, so it, it is a dilemma. Yes, yes, thank you for giving us.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, sir.
I'll see you tomorrow night.
Goodnight.
Councilwoman Benjamin, uh, that this is about entertainment district ordinance.
Oh, okay, I think I was talking about, uh, when you, when you tried to get that to the ordinance, 'cause I have, I have to have, okay. So, so starting with entertainment, uh, district, I wanted to pull the ordinance so I can make sense to my own selves, and I didn't do you all, okay, it's been a while since I laid eyes on it. When, um, I, each of, when I, he just said that Smith, I presented before, uh, uh, at her request, um, at, uh, for, I get on the river, and she, uh, collaborating with our staff to have her event in the streets closed off, and, um, she was instructed to go to the police department, and afterwards, when she, uh, just to, I think the person was out there, she needed to speak, and I, I told the chief just to talk a little bit about the entertainment district itself, but I didn't have the ordinance in hand, and I was saying, she was, you know, that's the entertainment district, uh, actually, at a certain time, this is almost like the license proposed to go down on certain businesses and come up on other businesses during certain times, when I thought it was Thursday or Sunday, and, uh, Councilwoman Thomas picked up the ordinance for me, uh, thanks to Councilman Bowie having, of course, the pool for me, uh, when certain time, I think it was four P M to two thirty A M, where people can do certain things in the entertainment district, and that district is supposed to be closed off, like, you go to Bell Street, there are no cars driving down that district because at a certain time of day, it becomes the entertainment district, and, and so I was wondering why, if it's, if it's a defense, if it isn't the entertainment district, then there's an automatic closure, uh, and it fits into the sun, the, the timeframe, it's an automatic closure. And so that's why I want, I want you all to get a copy of it, and I'll send it to you, because I have the question, the clerk to send it to me in email form, but you all can have it and read along with it, and it was a mix, so if you just get two pieces of it, the original one says that the sunset on this ordinance by the city, the sunset in two thousand fourteen. However, you, you must have the supporting documents that came in two thousand sixteen, and the council fixed that sunset to say it remains in effect unless terminated by the city council via the ordinance, and, uh, that was in two thousand sixteen, that, that means, I'm speaking to a body that is, on December twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, we fixed that sunset, uh, that was flawed, 'cause the sunset said that, uh, it will go down and expire, um, at some point in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen, something like that. So you wanna look at that, uh, and read, read along with it, and when people come to request certain, certain times of the day, like the weekend, and certain hours of the weekend, the entertainment district is supposed to already be consigned, it's supposed to already be closed off, it's supposed to already, we are just not using the district to our advantage, oh my God, I've been preaching this forever, we are just not using the district to our full advantage, so that people can come in from other places and enjoy, uh, uh, the district, you know, we got art, uh, we supposed to have music, it's supposed to, Water Avenue is on the edge of town, and so it's designed perfectly for that, and I want you all to, uh, to have a copy of that, I wanted to give you that some options, because, uh, I just remember that when I was talking to chief about the closure, uh, for her, for next year, that the council, uh, the chief instructed to go to the police department, I was like, okay, but they were supposed to be already closed during the entertainment district time, so it tells you what, um, you know, victims drink alcohol beverages, is, walking up and down the street is legal, uh, as long as it's in a, 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 uh, telephone or tactic club with the name, with the logo of the, uh, uh, venue holding, to walk up and down the entertainment district, it tells you all of that in the ordinance. Now, the act itself, by the state of Alabama, the act is longer than our ordinance, and the act already crossed, so you wanna read the act along with the council's ordinance at the same time. So there's things we did, for those of you all who are preparing, come on, y'all, let's start up the entertainment district, let's get some new revenue, how about that? So I wanted to do that, I wanted to plug that in, all right? So farmer's market, the bid process, so you all know I've been talking about the farmer's market, uh, on the corner of, of, um, thirty fourth and, and First Avenue, and I had, uh, someone looking into it, and then when they said the price, I said, oh, okay, if it's gonna be in this program, it ha- it has to be bid out, for this president, if you can help me with that, and know it's not your job, if you can help me with the bid process, so that we can start wherever it is we need to start to get a bid, uh, for that corner or, or a farmer's market, very similar to, it can even have the same dimensions, if it fit, as one at Block Park, uh, so that we can have fresh fruit and vegetables and walk-in businesses of those who are on that side of town, uh, a lot of folks are, are there not walking to Block Park, because that street is very, very busy, that was out there, it was very busy. But this one, this one touches three wars, but all, you know, it touches, um, six, four and five, in a manner of speaking, and so we have people who can walk and walk in business, uh, to the farmer's market, okay? So it's just like a fresh fruit desert, and so if you would help me with that, so you can go ahead and get that done, I wanna get that done, uh, before I'm Roger out of here. Um, for next, the tennis court, it works for, uh, may have to be the same five minutes, Mr. President, and we, and we can do it at the same time, starting the bid process on the tennis court and work for, and the folks can come out and exercise, even during the twin season, if you know that the tennis court should fit, should be open, the tennis, tennis court should be open, y'all, so that people can have exercise, they can come out and have exercise, so tennis court should be open, and that bid process, the president, if you can help me with that, uh, so that we can go ahead and get that done, uh, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. The tennis court.
Yeah, I'm.
This one, I have a question. This one, I have a question. Go ahead, Councilman's show, then Councilman, uh, well, I got a question, uh, uh, Councilman Benjamin, the farmer's market project, have the Brownsfield cleared that area for farmer's market?
Oh, yes, sir, uh, so before this administration, I had worked on it, but I had to get it renewed because after a while, the fall sample expired, uh, so I had to get it during this tenure too, as well, and so we had to get it going here, so documentation is in, uh, planning and development for it, uh, so we got to go ahead and do it, uh, it, it tells you in the document how many inches the slab of concrete has to come from the ground, even though you know, everything has been tapped out, it's been tapped under the ground, they still say, and, and I, I wanna say it might be, I don't know, it's a instance that it has, the concrete has to come off the ground, and it can only be used for something like that, you can't for the playground there, where children will play, you know, they gave me very strict rules about it.
So if, 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 if there's gonna be a farmer's market, and you appreciate it, would the city have to extend its funds for preparation for that?
For, uh, getting the building up?
It'd be, be preparation for the farmer's market.
Okay, so I have all these, and the planning and development office, it's still there, they're just funding for the market itself, because that area is an area of, uh, they are probably in the grand, a fresh food, a fresh fruit and vegetable desert, and you may go to Walmart or any place else to get it, uh, you know, manufactured from somewhere else, but fresh fruit from our local farmers, you can't get it unless you wait for them to appear at Block Park. This one is a walk-in, it's, it puts a qualifying up on the grant.
Is there a document that was specified specifically, putting me to charge for it before, if farmer's market is actually the place there?
Yes, yes, I think it's, uh, uh, Mr. Thompson, well, hopefully, hopefully he can attend the meeting tomorrow, and he can, uh, email us the document, and then walk us through it.
Okay, that'll work, that'll work, thank you. Okay, Councilwoman.
Okay, uh, and so the tennis court, Mr. President, again, I think you said, yes, you would help with that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, uh, the, our president said the, uh, the budget process, you all, uh, Mr. President, I would, I would say you are, are going to set up a date sometime soon that then, so we talk only about the budget.
Yes, ma'am, uh, hopefully, we, we can probably start next week, uh, let me do it on, um, I guess we can do it via Zoom, I would love to get in person, but do y'all want, I, 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 do y'all want to do it, Zoom or face to face, so it's the best?
Mr. President, I, I present a change. Uh, if they have the building moved, have the building completed, um, we, we said that we need to get the building completed so we can get back in our chambers, I think this budget process is gonna be very, very hard for us, very necessary for us to, uh, be in the midst of each other, I'm here. So the reasons actually is now, he, he, he really generally, uh, discussing about the finances of the city, so I think we need to plan to get back into the chamber.
I tell you what we can do, we can have a workday among the council, we can bring our own stuff and move forward with it.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, and I, and I keep putting it on here, you all, so just so it's just one of our faces, we don't get behind ourselves, uh, and, and speaking of not getting behind ourselves, that's why I keep putting election day preparations up as well, it's so important that we have every single thing that we need, there's, there's some small things that are easy to forget, but there are some big things that, that should already be taken care of. The locked door today is a violation of civil rights, of void rights, uh.
What locked door? Councilwoman.
The locked, locked door to the house.
Oh, it's locked back there?
Yeah, the door was locked, locked, uh, today, and they didn't open last week, one of the days, uh, one of the days they didn't open last week until ten o'clock at A M. This is election season, people have a right to come in and get absentee ballots, they have a right to have, to get documentation, they have a right to come in, talk to the clerk if they have a question about the election process, we cannot disenfranchise anyone, and this is a violation of that, and so this is election season, we must be open every single day to the public, so the city itself is not in violation of that, and so that's one of the things that we can look, we can look into, uh, because some people may see it as small, but it is a true thing to violate someone's human right, and so, that's, that's what they have, uh, yes, yes, so that right now, uh, is something that we gotta think about, this is either, so I'm just not talking about election day, although it says election day, I'm talking about election season, so the election season started when we opened on July seventh, or whatever day that was, that's the election season goes all, all the way to November, all the way into November, so we have a season where we cannot, we cannot do that to the public, so we have things like cancer and types of gloves, extra trai- extra training that they've never had before, because we have done this during the pandemic, pandemic that I can think of, for those small things that we can forget to fall to the class, we wanted to take care of all these things, uh, for, all this twenty-six, and that is around the corner, and so that's why I just put the election day preparation on the, on the, uh, agenda.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Benjamin. Are you here, of course, for Councilwoman Benjamin at this time? If not, Councilwoman Thomas?
Mr. President.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes, I, I don't know, did we, did we, you know, uh, did we break some information on, uh, the workers that are be working, uh, the election?
Yes, about the resolution?
We did, we did, I.
Yeah, I thought we did. I'm talking about the, the pay wire.
Oh, I forgot, I forgot about that, yeah, you did mention that to me, go ahead and go mention it, uh, what we talked about, and we have major messages to look into it, I forgot all about it, before we, uh, go to Councilwoman, uh, Thomas from those side, go ahead, Councilman Randolph.
Yeah, I, I had mentioned, uh, President Bowie, that, uh, this is a pandemic going on, and, and we want to protect our, uh, workers that work in the fallen place, uh, about, uh, upping the pay from, uh, one hundred to two hundred dollars, 'cause, uh, I'm, I'm kinda like, uh, those people sitting between their lives adjusting, with these people, some people might come in, we don't know what they got, and I just wanted to see what the county thought about raising the pay from one hundred to two hundred dollars to the working.
Councilwoman Benjamin, did you look at too bad to see would it be possible, because I know you have it.
I absolutely will, I, I, I absolutely will, and I agree with Councilman Randolph.
I do too, yeah, but just wanna make sure, 'cause we're in supply, so, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna for free, free payment.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Good idea, Councilman Randolph, you did mention to us, I forgot all about it, but that's a good idea, and I'm gonna support that, but, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I could, I could, I could, could the turn is recently set, so we can learn that tomorrow day?
Oh, please, a party, rally, should we have a laugh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let us know, so we can probably, uh, move forward then on tomorrow. Thank you, Councilman Randolph, I think that, that's a great idea. Uh, Councilwoman Thomas, Brad Cudger Ward, Southern, and Community, Columbus Ward, Southern.
Okay, and I, I can add two, uh, emergency problems that have happened in more than that, uh, one is that, that telegram pole on the corner of Church and, uh, Chestnut Boulevard, we've been had this pole, uh, some, someone hit it with a car, it's been several months now, that, uh, we haven't, uh, did anything, this pole is beginning to be dry-washed, and if it falls, it's gonna, it's gonna, all the wires, the car, anything that's coming, right there on the corner by the car wash, we talked about it before, this is an emergency that I noticed, I looked at it the other day, and I said, we are gonna have to take care of this, this, this immediately, because this pole is split, it's barely, it's been raining, and, and in, and in several months, it begins to be dry, dry-washed.
Okay, I put, Councilwoman Thomas, I'm putting a text here to Miss Tia Stell now, who's over at Alabama Power, and I have her to give you a call, 'cause I know we met out there, and I thought, uh, and we had talked about it, but I'm putting a text here to her now, uh.
Yeah, we need to take care of that, we need to.
and I have her to give you a call. 'Cause I know we met out there and I thought, uh, and we had talked about it, but I'm putting a text in to her now, uh...
Yeah, we need to take care of that immediately before, before it falls. Cars drivers on Chestnut are coming down.
Sure.
Also, we have, uh, during the bad weather, we have, uh, Church where we have a tree that's split. And it is, it is, is, uh, it's on the, it's on the side where the tree is, like, is laying on the power line. And it's, it's where people walk on City Roadway on Church, on Church Street down there, also Chestnut Boulevard. And it's in front of a, a home. Uh, I mean, the, the lightning hit it or split it, but it is laying on the power line. It is laying on that. We need to get that taken care of before it falls more on somebody or the hole could be walking through there on the sidewalk. Uh, our next, uh, item is, I, I already turned it in to Ma, Major Madison about this. I got to get this grass cut on City Roadway. It is bad. It is covering up the soft side and the whole area. So I'm working to, hoping he will have that contract written for me so they can go in and, and cut this grass. Uh, the cameras are being forced to, in this ward, I want to, I, I looked into the company, same company that, uh, they, the cameras put up from Archivise. And I wanted this, this, uh, company to come out. I want to move forward on this because it's beginning to be a... My neighborhood is beginning to be a bang, bang, bang shootout. And I just don't want, I don't want anyone... I don't, I don't want anyone to get hurt. So this is why, uh, this is why I've been working on this here, get done. Because, uh, uh, we have too many, uh, guns fired. And, uh, it's beginning to be a, a major issue in this, in this location in our area. So I would like the police to monitor this, uh, more in the bad areas that we're having these guns be fired with people shooting at each other in the open. I want to move forward on that. Uh, I looked into, through the lead, I had questions about it. And, uh, it's a public safety that you can use your, uh, oily to prevent this from happening, if anyone gets killed over here in this neighborhood. Uh, also, I would have, uh, also requested this, you know, how many, uh, the calls of the gun fire over in this community are record, uh, from the police department, uh, the areas that we've been having this shootout scene? And also, I wanted to ask this question. It's dealing on, I wanted to ask, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin this. It's dealing up on this. A question was asked to me. And I want to make sure that, uh, this is related under the COVID nineteen. Uh, I remember, uh, saying that under COVID nineteen, uh, first responders, uh, that they would get paid their, their, uh, the fund and that we voted on. And, uh, is the chief on it?
Uh, I don't see it, ma'am. Go ahead.
Uh, the question was that, uh, who in this booking area is just a part of, of first responding where, where, uh, when the officer brings the person in off the, the street then arrested, the, the area where they have to search his, uh, fingerprints and, uh, book their, the citizens. Uh, I wanted to ask, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, uh, do these people follow up under the first responder because they're dealing with citizens that you don't know if they have, uh, the virus, uh, of being protected? Does that, they follow up under, uh, first responder?
Okay, I need to be clear on what you're asking me. Today earlier when we talked, I told you, I, I asked it in public safety because public safety encompasses all of public safety. Now, first responders are the first on the scene to respond. And those other people are definitely there to do that. And so if you're asking me about first responders, there is absolutely no question about first responders should be made. But, but public safety is a integral of all public safety. So I need to be clear on, on what it is you would like me to answer.
I would like for you to answer that anyone that works in, up in the police department when citizens, uh...
Public safety.
Uh-huh, public safety. If they get, when they get arrested and she, the person has to, you know, five people have to deal with, uh, the citizens that they bring in to be booked, which they have to deal with their, the, the person, the cat now, their fingerprints, and deal with them doing the photo, taking the photo. So, uh, my question is, do they follow with, under, under the, under the same umbrella with the public safety?
Yes.
Is that the safety?
Yes, they follow under public safety. Yes, yes, okay. And also, can I ask the other question?
Go ahead.
The other question is that if we have an officer, you know, that has a, a uniform on and he, uh, like, we've been using, uh, officer, uh, what's his name? That he is on the front door when you, you come in and take the chair?
Chair, yeah.
Yes, and that is what I wanted to ask the question. I, do, do he follow up under the, uh, public safety?
It's public, it's public safety.
He absolutely, public safety encompasses it all. So he is, he is not, not, he should not be a question to anyone at all because he directly, he directly takes the temperature at the door. So he should not be a question, like, at all. But public safety, regardless of that, public safety encompasses all of public safety. And not just police department, fire department, it's all of public safety.
Okay, that was the question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
And that's why I asked because it was asked, the question was asked to me. And, uh, I said that I was, I, I wanted to ask to you and to President Bowie that these workers that work at the police department dealing with this and the workers that, so the officers are wearing the uniform out here in the public, that, uh, that they, uh, they be right away to get paid too, 'cause they get paid.
Well, let me tell you, let me explain that to you. They cut the checks. And the reason why, I told them, I mean, I told Miss Wade to hold, hold the checks to get clarity. When I, when I made the motion, I, I, I was always thinking, thinking about the officers. I didn't think of the rest of the trial. I didn't think of trial. I mean, the ranking, yeah. When I made the motion, I did not think about the other, um, public safety, uh, support staff. Yeah, I, I did not think about that. But that's why I told Miss Wade to hold, hold the checks right before the council. And since, you know, we have moved forward with it now, uh, the council just go ahead and, oh, just move forward, give them the... But I'm gonna abstain from it because I have a relative over there working and I'm already in the wrong list. And the reason why that I pushed it, because I have a relative over there working. But that's neither here nor there. My thing was just for the ranking officers. But now since we're looking at it, you know, public safety, there's a hole. We can bring that forward tomorrow, but I'm gonna abstain from it.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if I'm the opposite concerned and, you know, that's a... So a while ago when we were first elected, when we were first elected, someone called us to the league and, and the attic concerning, uh, information that I was sending out to the work, for work workers receiving it. But it is, it did get work for that entire city, but work was included. So I was concerning, concerning the, with my relatives that live in work force. And there are many of them, huh, that live in work force. And, um, so that after that, we get, that, that, there's nowhere around us because my relatives get to live where they want to live and I cannot leave them out as a citizen because they happen to live in my ward. So I was also that thing you get, 'cause, so you can take it into your thoughts and into your consideration.
Yes, ma'am, that's enough. I contacted the league today and, you know, they advised me, you know, uh, it may be in the best interest if I abstain. But if I wanted to, it, 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 then I thought I'd go through their distribution to get their installation. But the best interest of it, uh, obviously, I'm staying. And like I said before, when I initially brought it up, I was talking about the ranking officers. Uh, I didn't think about the other public safety, uh, employees. But, uh, that's neither here nor there. We just move forward on it tomorrow and I'm going with that. Uh, Councilman Bowley, I think you had a voice that, uh...
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, sure, I wanted to make sure we, we approved the seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, to get the, uh, Marina dredged, which is in desperate need of getting dredged, it's even worse than it was a week ago. And, uh, and so I want to make sure that can come out of, uh, uh, Paying Development Special Projects Budget.
Okay.
I want to make sure you can put that on the consent agenda that's necessary to ensure that it gets paid in timely fashion. Please let me get this thing done.
Okay. 'Cause I think we talked to the commission about that. You did mention it to me. We can move forward with the consent agenda on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. President? Mr. President?
Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman Thomas, go ahead.
Mr. President, uh, the question I asked you about this, I would like to ask, I give everything that I need on all these cameras. I'm trying to protect the, some, some people from getting hurt over here in this area so we can have the police officers, since we are short of hands, invite you to monitor from the police department that we can save lives over in our community.
Okay, yeah, I, I, what am I need to do to assist you in that process? I definitely will, uh, be glad to do it for you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that is, uh, uh, agenda for tonight. And Councilmember, I, I, I'm gonna ask you, please. I think we definitely need to move forward with admitting that personnel manual. I know we talked about it with the contract because there are some concerns that was expressed tonight that I have some grave concerns about. And, uh, in the near future, a lot of these, these issues are gonna come back and gonna hit home very soon. So that's why I say it's gonna be very important that we protect ourselves because we are the legislative branch who are policy that procedures. And I don't want to get caught in any vicarious liability or some, or some of the stuff that may be coming down the pipe. So I'm gonna ask you. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I, in a, in an advisory capacity, um, when we're used to talking about this, would you marry me and Miss Valeria Jones, who, uh, you know, she has been here many, many years? And one thing I could say about her is this. She always posted the law. She always emails up the, the new and updated law. She always did that. And if you ask her a law, she almost posted it off the top of her head. She's always, if we're in advisory capacity, and we can bring someone else in as well, but I just think she just hit, she just hit my mind there foots. If we can bring her in as well as we deliberate, that would be wonderful.
Uh, that's a real, because I know she observed all, all of the, uh, search committees that, you know, that I have chaired because I think it's very important that you have, on each staff, a each odd person and a, and, and an attorney. Uh, but she's been very, uh, valuable in helping with some of the decisions, even in the interview process. But I would, instead, I would ask for her as we go through this process, uh, to go ahead and admit this, uh, personnel manual. I would then, uh, I would... Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
And the same as being said, uh, we can go ahead and adjourn. And the turnip house, if you could, go ahead and get, uh, the contracts to be as soon as possible. Try to get with Mr. Allison so we can go ahead and put them on the surveillance agenda. And also, uh...
Which contract, Mr. Allison, which contract?
All the contracts that, that you, uh, Councilor Short, I mean, uh, Councilman Randolph, Council?
The ones that I mentioned earlier?
Yes, sir, all the ones you mentioned earlier.
Okay, yeah.
And also too, uh, Mr. Allison, uh, we did a rehearsal for John Lewis some of months ago. And, uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Allison to go ahead and, let's complete it. I finished it up since, you know, since it's there. And putting it in a frame, and we definitely need to honor him by, uh, placing it in our council chamber with a frame, the rehearsal session.
Amen.
So, uh, I did put it on tomorrow and hopefully this week sometime, uh, we can go ahead and vote on it. And, uh, placing it in our council chamber because, uh, he made an admirable mark, not only himself, but also, uh, in the nation. Uh, with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, get ready to see y'all on tomorrow. And I look forward to resolving some of the problems that we have facing. And, and when I look at it, council is business over circumstance. And I would like to thank each one of you all for the work that you do and the work that you put forth on behalf of our services and the services that you provide. Uh, it's never go unnoticed. Again, continue to move forward, continue to do what you do. And that way, someone will be a better place. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.